You want to turn on the TV behind me? It's off right now.
All right. We will get started. Can we confirm that the recording has been started?
Yes, it is.
Excellent, thank you. It is now 11:03 a.m. and I would like to call to order this meeting of the WIFA Water Conservation Grant Fund Committee. I will call, roll Blake Anderson.
Here.
Sam Draper.
Here.
Andrea Gerlach. Tim Grandy.
Yeah.
Rhett Larson. Rhett.
Here.
Thank you. We miss you in person.
Sorry.
Here, thank you. Erin Young.
Here.
And Kim Shonik, I am also here. So I think that gets us six people, did I count right? Or seven?
Three, four, five, six, seven.
Perfect. Please remember to identify yourself when making a motion or requesting to speak. We will not actually be having motions today. We will just be speaking. For those attending virtually, please ensure you are unmuted for any votes. In addition, if any member wishes to depart the meeting at any time, please announce your departure for our recorded meeting records. Agenda item number two has with a staff received any disclosures.
Just tell the general counsel, no disclosures were submitted for today's meeting. However, if you'd previously identified a disclosure or a conflict for an agenda item at the last meeting, you would want to re-identify it if we're talking about it here today.
Okay, great. Do we have any of those for today?
This is Blake Anderson. I've got conflict with Pine Dale Estates, Timberland Acres, Clay Springs, and Voyager White Mountain Lakes. I'll be refusing myself from those.
What was the last one?
Voyager White Mountain Lakes.
Thank you. Rhett, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Rhett Larson. While I don't think it is a conflict, I'm going to go ahead and abstain from agenda item 5.66 for City of Glendale. Just out of an abundance of caution, since I represent the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association and they're a member.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else? All right. We will move to agenda item number three, Director's Report. I will pass it over to Director McGuire.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Shonik. I just want to reiterate a few things, since this is a meeting where we'll have some attendees that were not on last time. Big thank you to, first of all, you all for having such demand for this program, for being so committed to ensuring conservation in your relative systems and areas. In the last round of funding, we had about $200 million. We had exactly $200 million that were awarded for projects that are expected to save up to five and a half million acre feet. Another huge thank you to the Hobbs Administration and to Governor Hobbs and her team at the Office of Resiliency for trusting WIFA with 14 million more. And clearly, there's a lot of demand. There's a lot of need for those resources, and that's why you all gave us significantly more than $14 million in demand. But we're very excited to have the opportunity today to talk about these projects and eventually have the committee vote to recommend those projects. Do you want to reiterate that's not going to happen today? This is a study session only, so no recommendations will be made. For that, you'll need to tune in on Monday, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. I also want to highlight four attendees here today. If you are joining us online, if the committee has questions for you, we will be able to enable your mic and allow you to speak. Right now, everybody's muted. But to help me do that effectively, I'm just going to ask two things. If you're here to represent an application or an applicant, please indicate that in your Zoom name, just so that it's kind of clear, you know, just make your name and then a dash and whatever your applicant name is. The second thing I would ask is that when we bring up the relevant application to you, use that raise hand feature on Zoom, because that'll bring you to the top of the list. If you're calling and joining in by call only, use star nine. That'll raise the hand and let me know that I need to enable your mic. It'll just make everything move a little bit more smoothly, since we do have a lot of ground to cover today. Committee members, for you all, I will reiterate again the evaluation criteria that we're using here today. That's just a quick reminder. You all know this criteria. The applicants know it as well. The applications are structured around it, but always a good reminder to just have up there. And then I will make just a quick programming note that we will do anticipate a lunch break at some point today. When that happens, we'll let you all know, committee members, same deal as last time. If you're joining us here in person, we'll just have you hang out in the executive room to eat your lunch. But we do anticipate that'll be pretty quick, because again, a lot of ground to cover. So just for everybody joining online and the committee members as well, know that we will give you a break at some point. It just depends on sort of where we are in the agenda. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. We will move on to our regular agenda. We are now moving into our regular agenda. I'll repeat some of the sentiment I expressed on Tuesday's meeting, including the gratitude we have for everyone who applied for these new grant funds. As was the case during our previous funding cycles, we received significantly more applications than there is funding to fill those applications. And also, like the last cycle, these grant funds are ARPA dollars and are subject to ARPA deadlines and requirements. Given that the deadline to spend these funds is only slightly more than a year away, you may see a different tone in some of our questions we ask of the applicants this time. Specifically, the committee may place additional importance on the feasibility of the project and program applications, especially the ability to complete the proposed activity within the prescribed timeline. This may include additional scrutiny to the timelines to complete the program or the project, as well as the applicant's ability to effectively comply with federal requirements. I will say there were several applications that had funding that has already been spent that you're seeking reimbursement for. So if you have those applications, please know what those federal requirements are, because we're going to ask you if you can comply with those. I will also note that for today's study session, the committee will be conducting a review only of the applications on the agenda, and we will not vote to recommend any applications to the WIFA board during today's session. Voting will take place on Monday, April 7th, at a meeting beginning at 4:30 p.m. Finally, for reference, all applicants with us today, the committee will use the following framework to review applications. First, staff will present applications to the committee, followed by a period of general discussion amongst committee members. After that discussion, the committee applicants may be invited to address the committee if the committee has specific questions for the applicant. If we don't ask you questions, it doesn't mean we don't like your application. It might mean you did a really good job in your application, and we don't have questions. If you are asked to speak, please answer the question and not provide a presentation of your application. Next, the committee will have an opportunity to identify any co-benefits for staff to include. And finally, we will open an opportunity for public comment on the applications, which will be limited to three minutes per commenter. With that, we are going to get started with agenda item number four. Any questions by the committee before we get started? I see no hands up, so we are going to go ahead. I will turn it to Lindsay to start us off.
All right, thank you, Chairwoman. So just a few updates since we presented this list to you on Tuesday at our last committee study session. So I won't go over the whole list again, but we do have a few updates for the amounts for the advanced meter and system upgrades. It is less than previous, since we had a few staff recommendations to reduce, either due to the amounts of matching funds available or because it appears to be part of a previously awarded program and would exceed the $3 million limit per program allowed. So that dollar amount for the advanced meters has been reduced. Additionally, we did have a reduction on the vegetation management application due to the match appearing to be provided over a 10-year period. I do believe we have some updates from the applicant regarding that, so we will make sure that the committee gets all of the updates available. And then one final update, we also did hear back from the Chandler Unified School District regarding being able to meet the federal procurement requirements with their pre-award costs. They did decide to withdraw that application, so it's for WC 7342-2025 for $3 million for the Chandler Unified. It's been withdrawn, and additionally, we had the Gila Valley Irrigation District's application, WC 7315-2025 for $200,000, has been withdrawn by the applicant as well. I believe those are all my updates for the application list, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Just to verify, those were agenda items 13 and 14 last time?
Let me confirm very quickly. Yes, 13 and 14, correct.
Thank you.
Just to double confirm, that was Chandler Unified School District and Gila Irrigation.
Correct. And Gila Irrigation has two applications. Only one has been withdrawn.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
So the 21 Gila Valley Irrigation District is still in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
The larger one.
Okay, thank you. My laptop screen is small, so I hidden too many columns. Thank you. Any additional questions? Did we receive any additional input from applicants from the last meeting?
I believe we did, and we will be saving all of the responses we are getting from the applicants within the shared folders and then providing the committee a note of where to go look for any updates.
Okay, great, thank you. I look forward to my weekend review of more applications. All right, we will move to agenda item number five, review and discussion of advanced meters and system upgrades.
If I could just make a general comment about the group as a whole before we get into this?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to note, so for this group specifically, you're going to see in the feasibility sections for most of these applications, staff has added the applicant's reported water use data that is reported to ADWR, as well as notes as it refers to WIFA's benchmarks identified. So I just want to reference as a kind of blanket statement for all of these, the WIFA's benchmarks for meter upgrades. We generally consider 2% to 10% water savings to be feasible. And then for the systems which show relatively low amounts of water, which is unaccounted for, so if it's 10% or less, for those systems, we note that further water savings may be difficult to obtain, since it would indicate, you know, meters are fairly accurate and any potential leaks may be fairly minimal, and getting the systems unaccounted water for to zero could be difficult, if not impossible. It's not to say that it's feasible and water savings could be coming from various calculations, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there as a general statement. I won't be going through each and every one of them as we go through the review, so I want to highlight that for the committee.
Thank you. Do you want to kick us off with Walden Meadows?
All right, so we will start off, and we are starting at 5.37, just to continue on our numbering from our first study session. So that's why we're starting with 37 here, but 5.37 Walden Meadows Community Co-op. They are requesting $15,000 with a $5,000 match being provided, so that they can install smart meters to help detect hidden water leaks in their system on large rural properties in Willhold. Their initial installations have already identified multiple leaks according to the applicant. And I believe that's all I have for you. Thank you, Kim.
Excellent, thank you. I, well, we'll start with committee discussion. Does any committee member wish to start the discussion or have a question for the applicant? Okay, go ahead, Sam.
Thank you. Awesome. Thank you for all these applications. One of the questions that I had, and I'm going to have it for a lot of the applications that we looked at today, was there was indication that having these advanced meters installed would help identify leaks, and they'd be able to notify customers. But some of them, it was unclear to me if there was an actual customer portal portion, where customers would have access to the information, or if it was just the utility would be able to notice and then let the customer know. So my question for the applicant would be, is there a customer portal on the specific advanced meter implementation Friday? Where the customers would be able to feel more empowered to access that data?
Great, and do we have the applicant? So we'll go ahead and let the applicant answer.
We do. So Terry and Shelley, your mic's been enabled. You just need to unmute yourself, and you'll be able to answer committee member Draper's question.
And please start with introducing yourself.
Yes, my name's Terry Williams. I'm the president of the Walden Meadows Community Co-op. And we do have an app that's available for the customers to use, so they are able to see if they have leaks or not. And actually, it's already happened a few times with the apps.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have?
Yeah, thanks for clarifying. Sorry, no, I was just saying thank you, sorry.
Do we have additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move to discussion. Is there any discussion of this application? I found it to be relatively straightforward and cost-effective. Okay, we will identify any concerns or co-benefits related to this application. Would any committee member like to start that? All right, I will say in terms of co-benefits, it's a rural community in an area that could definitely benefit from water savings. It's groundwater-dependent community, relatively low cost. And I did not have any concerns related to this application. I appreciate, Sam, you clarifying that the customers have access to that data. Any additional co-benefits or concerns committee members would like to highlight? Blake?
Yeah, I think just for this specific application, really the next one year, 30 that we have as a group, for all the applicants that are listening, I think just it's on the applicant to make sure that they're complying with the ARPA guidelines, and that's a huge component of these grants. And so I would just encourage that if you are seeking this funding, that you know what you're signing up for, and you know how to manage those funds if you don't have the experience with it, because there is quite a bit that goes into federal and state procurement, and it's not what a lot of small districts are maybe used to of just being able to select a vendor that you want, purchase the materials, and get the project going there, or steps and policies and procedures that you have to place that you maybe have familiar with. So obviously, that's the district's responsibility, but something to bear in mind.
Thank you, Blake. Sam?
Just adding to the co-benefits discussion, installing smart meters is a fifth management plan best practice, and then having the customer portal section is another best manager practice. So two for one, two birds, one piece of bread, as the Audubon folks say.
I thought we weren't supposed to feed them bread. It's grapes cut in half now.
Yeah, you're probably not supposed to.
All right, any public comment on this application?
We've received no request for public comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on this application? All right, we will move on to our next application, Wildflower Water Co-op. Great name.
All right, 5.38 for Wildflower Water Co-op. They did request 18,400. We did have a staff recommendation to reduce that to 8,000 due to their response to question six that indicated 4,500 match would be provided. Based on that amount of match, the grant amount couldn't exceed 18,000. However, we do acknowledge that additional match might be available from the applicant. And then they are planning to replace outdated meters with accurate digital meters to detect system leaks and install backflow devices to prevent contamination due to wells or line failures. And then you also will see that the with a staff estimate is zero acre feet, and that is just due to the applicant's reported water savings annually being zero acre feet. And we did include the ADWR water use data for reference, however, did not do a staff correction to try to guess at their water savings.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, do we have the applicant available?
We do, Madam Chair. So David, I have enabled your mic. You'll just have to unmute yourself to respond to any questions the committee may ask. And as the chairwoman said before, please make sure you introduce yourself as well.
Yeah, I'm David Carr, President and CEO of Wildflower Water Co-op.
Great, so here, the question that the staff had is in relation to your match. What is your total available match?
Total available match? Well, we can go up to, oh, right now, we can go up to around 10 grand.
Okay, so you could get to the 4,600 to meet the minimum requirement?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, great, thank you. And then just, do you have a customer portal where customers will be able to see this data?
No, not at the present time.
Thank you. All right, are there additional questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair, Erin Young.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I am curious if the applicant wouldn't mind just walking through the reported non-revenue water and the savings anticipated.
Okay. Now, the non-revenue water, what are we?
Or lost and unaccounted for water, or just the?
Oh, okay. Right now, what they're figuring is like 30% loss, and that's went down. Our main water, main well meter is not recording properly right now. It's actually dropped. So I got a new meter on order right now to replace that, so. But basically, it added up to like $37,000 worth of revenue that we did not receive the last year because of water loss. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, it's helping, it's helping. And then what, how much water do you anticipate savings with, saving with the?
The meters?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, we figure we'll be able to identify any leakage. Some of these meters are like 30 years old, and we've been replacing them slowly. Anyway, once them replay, all replaced and everything, I figure we'll probably save, I'd say 15 to 20%.
And that's just through finding leaks quickly and fixing them?
Right, uh-huh.
And then in your application, the backflow preventers, I don't know that we've seen applications where we're adding additional, do backflow preventers help save water? I know it helps protect the system, but?
Yeah, it protects the system. As far as water savings, no, I can't foresee that.
And how much do, how much do those cost?
Okay.
You have an app or a bid?
Yeah, I got a, I got a price on individuals, and they're like 50 bucks a pop.
Okay, and it looks like 14. Okay. All right, you've answered my questions.
Any additional questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, David. We will move on to committee discussion. Any discussion amongst the committee? Okay, we will move on to identifying co-benefits and concerns. I think the water savings are difficult to estimate based on the data we have available, which is a concern. However, these meter projects do seem to have consistent savings across the different communities we've worked on. So I'm going to assume that there are water savings associated with this project. It's relatively low cost and benefits a groundwater-dependent system. Any additional concerns or co-benefits committee members would like to identify? Did we receive any public comment?
We did not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any last discussion on this application? Okay, we will move to our next application, Town of Parker.
All right, we have Town of Parker with agenda item 5.39. They have, it's going off on us, they have requested just over $34,000 for their activity to rehabilitate well number six in order to restore the well's efficiency. They additionally plan to add a high-efficiency VFD pump motor to be installed to improve the energy efficiency and reliability for the water system. We did note in the feasibility section, it was difficult to verify the water savings with this one, which is why you'll see the zero for the low estimate and the question marks for the high dollar per acre foot estimate. But we do note the proposal appears to improve reliability for the water system.
Excellent, and do we have the applicant?
You are here online for the Town of Parker. If you could use the raise hand feature, that would be very helpful. I don't see the applicant, Madam Chair.
Excellent. We will move on to committee discussion. This application appeared to be great things that need to happen to improve system efficiency, but it was difficult to identify clear water savings and it being distinct from system maintenance that is needed. Any additional discussion related to this application?
I agree, Kim. I think that there's not really a water savings, and this may be one that's better sued for SRF funding or the Water Supply Development Fund rather than a conservation grant fund.
Erin, I saw you off mute.
Oh, I, I agree. I thought, well, maybe if they're keeping more water in the aquifer with less like blow-off water or something like that, maybe. But yeah, I was having a hard time connecting.
Thank you. So for committee members, we want to make sure that we are clearly identifying concerns and co-benefits for Chelsea. Our last meeting, I blended them quite a bit, so if it feels redundant, that is why. So we will now identify co-benefits and concerns. I think primary concern for me is the lack of clearly defined water savings and the system maintenance approach. Co-benefits of this project, it does improve system reliability, and I see Rhett's hand up, so hopefully he has more. And I see Rhett's hand up, so hopefully he has more.
I, I think this might be our only application this round from La Paz County.
That might be true. Okay, yes, Rhett is correct. All right, any additional co-benefits or concerns committee members would like to identify? Do we have any public comment on this application?
We have no requests, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on this application? We will move to Great Prairie Oasis.
All right, Agenda Item 5.40, Great Prairie Oasis, who is doing business as Sunland Water Company. They've requested just over $35,000 to replace existing outdated meters with new advanced smart meters. And a fairly straightforward application, I believe.
Thank you. Do committee members have questions for the applicant?
I do, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's see if we have the applicant real quick.
If you are here, or we do, Mr. Allen, I have enabled your microphone. You'll just have to unmute yourself to respond to the committee members' questions.
And please introduce yourself.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and Committee. My name is Todd Allen, and I am the Director of Operations.
Thank you. Go ahead, Erin.
If I have the correct application, I think I do. The reported non-revenue water loss was 1.1 acre feet. If you could just walk me through the reported acre feet in savings when it doesn't look on paper to have room for savings, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, I think the savings are going to come in the amount of water that's pumped total. We feel there are numerous leaks on the customer side that are actually being metered and the customers being billed for. But we feel we can help identify the customers' leaks. They can get them fixed and therefore result in water savings.
Well, then that leads me to Sam's question, you know. Do you happen to have the, the app side for the customer to see that, or would you be notifying them?
They do have the customer portal. Eventually, we will get there, but we will need to learn the system first before we get, you know, overwhelmed with those calls. But yes, the plan is to ultimately open the portal to the customers.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. It appears like you've already have your meter vendor selected and the installer selected based on the application, which is great for turnaround time. I just wanted to confirm that you put that out and are following our procurement guidelines and state procurement policy to select those vendors in the first place.
I do not know that. We put in, you know, five to try it to see if it would work.
Okay, staff can speak a little bit more to that, but all of these funds are coming from federal ARPA dollars. And so there is a requirement to it to follow procurement policy and just different rules that come along with that. It's something just administratively that you should be aware of that does slow down the process and is maybe a little more formal than you're used to.
Okay, we will look into that, yes.
All right. Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move on to discussion, discussion from committee members. Okay, we will move to identifying co-benefits or concerns related to this application. Does any committee member wish to start? I think that it's a fairly simple meter replacement project, which does have benefits. The water savings may be difficult to identify based on lost and unaccounted for water, and they're expecting the savings on the customer side. In terms of concerns, I think, you know, making sure that the applicant does utilize appropriate procurement procedures. But they have not expended the money already, so they can still go through the appropriate process. Are there other co-benefits or concerns that folks would like to raise?
Madam Chair, may I ask a question of the applicant?
I, yes, one second. Let's move to Blake, though.
Oh, sorry.
And then we'll go back to that, yes.
I had a more of a question or concern for staff. With all these small applications, the administrative load of having to help people through the procurement process. There's a lot of smaller dollar amount applications from first-time applicants. While probably more so than anybody else, I'm very empathetic to small systems and seeing them get funds. I think it is hugely impactful for them. I do think that there is some concern on my end of if all of a sudden staff ends up with this large batch of projects to administer and make sure that they're complying with ARPA and having to, it's just, it's going to be more work on their part. So I don't know if now is the appropriate time to bring that to staff as a concern. But how do you think administratively that would work, or what's your capacity like?
Chelsea, would you like to comment?
Joe, do you want to take it?
Yeah, this is Joe Satelli, General Counsel. As far as staff capacity is concerned for evaluating the applications before you, it's not specifically one of your criteria that you need to look at. I wouldn't classify it as a feasibility of the project either. That's more of a WIFA internal administrative aspect of it. Lindsay could certainly maybe speak to what the day-to-day entails. But we do have programs and processes in place, and we do have some guidance out there to enable even, you know, small and large systems in compliance with it. It is ARPA funding, and it's still relatively new for really everyone. And it does change a little bit, but I'll let Lindsay comment on that. My only comment is just from the legal side of things. As far as an actual evaluative criteria, it's not specifically one that you're statutorily looking at for how can WIFA as the agency handle it.
And this is Lindsay. I'll just add on that, yes, staff bandwidth is always a concern for me, but not something that I think needs to go into the factoring for the decisions today. And I would say also that we are today in a much different place than we were when we were beginning this whole process. We have a lot of guidance out there and resources that people can use. Webinars they can watch about procurement that are already recorded and out there. So I think as far as bandwidth, I think we're in a much better place today to add on a bunch more projects to get them through the ARPA hurdles and obstacles that we'll have to get them through, so.
Thank you.
I'll also take the opportunity, Madam Chair, just to point out the revised reimbursement guide that went out to all current recipients of grants. We can also make those available online as well. Those are going to give all of our current and potential grant recipients a very good idea of what these reimbursement requests look like, what the documentation is, the level of specificity of that documentation. So as Lindsay said, you know, the processes and the place that we are right now is much better. But definitely do appreciate the concern of making sure that we don't kind of overload, overload staff.
I don't know how you guys do it. So thanks, Joe. That was a really good lawyer answer. Lindsay, thanks for being on my track. That's helpful. Cool, thank you.
Thank you. And I think we'll go back to Erin, who has a question for the applicant.
You know, I'm, I'm really sorry. I'm going to withdraw my question. I found it answered in the application. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, any additional discussion on this application? And then, did we cover co-benefits and concerns? Do we have any public comment on this application?
No requests for public comment, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Any last thoughts on this application? Okay, thank you. We will move to Pinedale Estates Domestic Water Improvement District.
All right, thank you. So Agenda Item 5.41 for Pinedale Estates Dwid. They are requesting $40,000 to improve their water system by purchasing and installing advanced meters for their system. This would be a reimbursement of meters purchased previously. So we did add the note regarding compliance with the federal procurement requirements. Also, I would like to just make a correction for the feasibility section because I feel like the staff comments got a little confused in there. But the, the overall water savings reported by the applicant was one acre foot annually, which would be in line with benchmarks that staff identified just above 10% of their total use and consistent with the ADWR reporting of the unaccounted for water. However, it might be difficult to attain since it would reduce the unaccounted water to just about zero acre feet. So just a slight correction on that one, and apologies for any confusion.
All right, thank you. Does any committee member wish to start the discussion on this application? Or have, well, first I'll start with, does anyone have questions for the applicant? I have a question for the applicant. I'm looking at my notes. So do we have the applicant?
We do. Caleb, I've enabled your mic, so you'll be able to speak in. Don't forget to introduce yourself before speaking.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Caleb Brock. I am the Product Manager for the Contract Operations Company that operates Pinedale Estates.
Great. So this application has already had some of the work completed, is that correct?
Yeah, the meters have been purchased.
Were the meters purchased following federal procurement guidelines, and can you document that?
Yes, they were. Yeah, we can.
Great. Um, the only other question I had, and I, I'm not going to form it as a relatively good question here, but maybe you can touch on it. Your cost per acre foot seemed relatively high compared to similar projects. Is there a reason for that?
Part of the reason is that in this community, there's a lot of second homes. And so we usually have a couple leaks a year from the customer side. That can go weeks to months with unnoticed. And so, you know, we estimate 50,000 to 100,000 gallons a year possibly going through that are unnoticed until the customer comes back.
Okay. And then how were these projects previously funded, since you've already done the purchase? How did you pay for that?
Out of pocket.
Okay. Thank you. Do other committee members have questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the same question about if there is an online customer portal and for those folks who, maybe this is their second home and they're not located nearby, what actions would be taken to help them out with the leak while they're gone?
Yeah, so currently there's not, but we are currently finishing up three other projects in other systems that are similar to this, where we're setting up portals for the customers in those systems. So they'll definitely be a priority that we will, once we get those meters installed.
Okay. Additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move to discussion by the committee members. Does any committee member have discussion or comment related to this? It's very nice mood lighting in here.
Apparently.
It's very nice. I think you need to do more interpretive dance, so it picks up on it.
We thought about like a DJ station over there that has the lights that goes, yeah.
We have to do this.
Yeah.
All right. Discussion on this application. Okay, co-benefits or concerns? This is a groundwater dependent community, and this does have water savings benefits. I was concerned that the relative cost is high, but also, you know, these systems vary wildly. And how the water savings is estimated can be difficult, so not that much of a concern. Additional co-benefits or concerns folks would like to call out? Okay, have we received any public comment on this application?
We have not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any last thoughts on this application before we move to the next? Okay, we will move to Timberland.
All right, Agenda Item 5.42 for Timberland Acres Dwid. They are requesting $75,000 to complete critical leak repairs for their system once their current meter replacement program is completed. For reference, they do have a previous water conservation grant to install meters, and they're actively working on that, that grant to get that completed. And we did note in the feasibility that it was difficult to verify the estimated savings since it was due to count it on future leaks.
You can. Thank you. Oh, let me check. Do we have the applicant here?
We do. It's once again Caleb Brock.
Caleb, can you reintroduce yourself, please?
Yes, I am Caleb Brock. I am the Product Manager for the Contract Operations Company that operates Timberland Acres.
Okay, great. This project, you've had previous water conservation grant awards, correct?
We have.
Okay, how far along in spending are you on those projects?
We're about 80% through.
Okay, so you anticipate no challenges completing that and then taking on this additional work?
No, we see it as an extension of the previously done work, yes.
Okay. Great, those were all of my questions. Does any committee member have additional questions? Go ahead, Colin.
Yeah, I just had a question about your lost and unaccounted for water listed in the application. Right now, we see zero acre feet, which is amazing, so I just wondered if you could speak to that.
For that, the production meters were bad.
Do you have any estimates of what that number might actually be?
We're estimating around 50%.
Okay, thank you.
15, sorry.
15, got it. Thank you.
I like how none of us flinched at 50. That's a thing. Erin, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, maybe it's obvious and I'm missing it, but would we need to see the invoices for the work completed? Was that provided somewhere? And are they asking for reimbursement of work completed, or is there some new work happening?
So, sorry.
I believe this one, you have not completed the work you're proposing, correct? Can you just clarify if you're seeking reimbursement, or if this is new work?
Yeah, so we really just want to say thank you overall, because this original work was done through the Water Conservation Grant Fund the first time. And with that, the board opted to go for the higher-end advanced meters with leak detection. And so as we're finishing up the installs of all those meters, we're about to turn that on. And we suspect a, could to find quite a few undetected, that leaks that were previously undetected. And, you know, this work wouldn't have been even able to be completed if it wasn't for the Water Conservation Grant Fund in the first place, so.
But for this current proposal, Caleb, have you completed purchases, or is this?
No, this will be for, we have not completed purchases. This will be for work that will be done in the future.
Great. So this is leak repaired that you have yet to identify?
Right. So when we turn that leak detection on, we suspect to find quite a few leaks that will need to be repaired. And with a system this size, it does, a lot, a high percent of their budget each year goes to leaks and repairs. So we're trying to get ahead of it and go, kind of switched. The board has really inspired from the previous funding that they've been attending board meetings and board trainings to start budgeting for depreciation and capital improvement. So they're trying to be more proactive and get ahead of leaks and instead of just reacting to them as they come up.
Thank you. Erin, did that clarify?
It helps. So the actual work isn't, isn't, hasn't been identified yet, like the actual projects. Sounds like. So I'm a little confused, but that's okay.
No, I think we want to, we want to be clear, and Caleb, so my understanding, this is not meters. This is the meters that you are currently installing. You anticipate them identifying areas with leaks, and this funding would go towards repairing leaks. So those leaks may be in system lines or other areas on the system, but we don't know exactly where those are. Is that correct?
Yes, once we turn on the leak detection, the whole system is going to turn into a leak detection grid, and it will be able to identify where leaks are at in the system. And so our plan is with the funding that they have in their budget right now, it would take, we turn that on. You know, the, we suspect in some ways, the system might light up like a Christmas tree. But with the limited funding we have now, we won't be able to address those leaks until, you know, years to come as the money comes in. until, you know, years to come as the money comes in.
Great, thank you. Additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move to discussion by the board. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of Timberland, looking to the future and saying, we know we're going to have leaks. We want to repair them. I do question that if they were coming to us and saying, we've identified a leak in our main line because of our leak detection system, and we need to replace, you know, fifty feet, a hundred feet, half a mile of our main line or a sideline, we would look at that as a line replacement versus a generic leak replacement and repair. So I am a little worried about how much is just needed system improvements and how that gets framed up. So that's my, my primary concern is understanding how this would be implemented compared to that needed ongoing system maintenance and how we have viewed those applications.
If, if, if I could add something?
Um, we're going to actually have you hold off because we are now in discussion by committee members. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Sam, did you have a comment?
I can, yes. I'm on phone, so it always looks like I'm unmuted, but I'm doing the unmute, anyway. And it is two birds, one feeder. So keep that for later. Two birds, one feeder.
Yes.
I, I felt the same about this. I appreciated that, like you said, the thoughtfulness and wanting to, I'm not going to go off the co-benefits. The foresight to know that you're going to have leaks that need to be fixed. And it's difficult when it's not, here's, here's exactly what we are going to do.
Yeah. All right, any additional discussion by committee members? Okay, do we want to identify co-benefits or concerns? My primary concern is that it's not clear exactly what the action will be, and it's therefore hard to evaluate. In terms of co-benefits, it is a rural community that is groundwater dependent. Other co-benefits or concerns?
Best manager practice.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Sam.
It's Sam, sorry, best manager practice.
Thank you. Have we received public comment?
We have not, Madam Chair.
Okay, we will, any last thoughts on this one? Okay, we will move to our next. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Caleb. Go ahead.
We have Agenda item 5.43 for the Sky High Dwid. They are requesting just above a hundred and six thousand dollars to replace their manual read meters with advanced smart meters to improve the accuracy and allow for remote reading and leak detection alerts for the customers. We included a few notes in the feasibility section for you, but otherwise, anyone else to add?
I found this to be a very straightforward project. And the application was pretty clear. I do not have questions for the applicant. Does any other committee member have questions for the applicant? Discussion on this application? Would any committee member like to identify co-benefits or concerns? It is a rural community that is groundwater dependent. It is certainly an area where water conservation is important. It is a relatively cost-effective application.
I had a question if the applicant's online.
Okay, we will find them.
I don't see an applicant to represent the High Dwid online. If you are here to represent the Dwid, if you could use the raise hand feature on Zoom, that would be great.
Blake, we don't see the applicant. Do you want to go ahead and state your question for the record?
We can, it can be part of our discussion as far as listing a concern, but just, it appears with this application, they've already selected their vendors. And so just making sure that that's already been done in line with ARPA requirements is kind of an ongoing concern of mine.
Okay, great, we will note that in the concern section.
It does look like we may have an applicant online. So if you are the four eight oh number that just raised your hand, I have enabled your mic. You'll have to unmute your phone, but you are able to speak in. Gary, I believe it's star six to unmute. So if you are on the phone and need to unmute, go ahead and use the star six. Star nine is raising your hand, star six is unmuted.
Oh, okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Brian Uren. I'm the new chairman of the Sky High Domestic Water Improvement District. So I missed out on the question, so my apologies.
It appears that you have, oh, go ahead, Blake.
Oh, yeah, I'll reiterate. Thank you for joining us. My question was, it appears that you've already selected your meter vendor and installation. Who's going to be doing all that for you? I just wanted to confirm that you guys did so in accordance with ARPA guidelines? Or is that just kind of a baseline budgetary quote? And you're going to go through formal procurement after receiving funding?
I believe, I worked with Paul Jewell on this, and I believe everything was done within the guidelines. So we should be good there.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Great, thank you. Aaron, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm guessing the anticipated savings are on the customer side. Since.
For our water?
Yeah, since the reported water loss is so low compared to the anticipated.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. On, on the water loss side there, they, bear with me one second. On our, our previous water manager, we went through a transition from our operator to a new operator. So I'm not sure how accurate the reports are, but they seem a little too accurate in speaking with other people. So that is something we're auditing in-house at our next meeting on the sixteenth. But I do know we have leaks. We are a, in a snow belt of Arizona, so most of our readings are done during the summer months. And the other six month stuff is estimated. So that was our deal in looking for the smart meters. But for the water loss numbers, yes, they are low. And I do not believe they are accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional discussion from committee members on this application? Go ahead, Sam.
Hi, hi, I had a question, and I think this is more aimed towards with the staff. With this application, I'd noted that there was the additional seventy-five hundred included in the budget that appeared for travel, lodging and food for contractual services. And I was trying to remember if that was something that we have excluded or included in other applications. Or disallowed, maybe that's the.
So, and I, I'm trying to find where, put that real quick. But in general, so travel costs could be allowable for reimbursement. We do have to make sure they fall in line with the allowable state travel policies, for example. But as long as it's directly related to completing the project, yes, travel costs such as that could be reimbursable. But hard to know until we actually see invoices and things to review for that.
Okay, perfect. I, that makes sense, and I totally understand that sometimes having someone come in on contract from another location ends up being more efficient and cost effective in the long run. So thanks for clarifying that for me, Lindsay.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Have we received public comment on this application?
We have received no requests, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, uh, does committee members want to identify any additional co-benefits or concerns with this application? Okay, we will move to our next application, Agenda item 5.44. And this is Watco Incorporated.
All right, so we have Watco Inc., who's requesting just, just nearly one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to purchase and install three hundred and forty-two advanced meters and automatic reading equipment for their system in unincorporated community of Shemway in Navajo County. And we've added a few notes in the feasibility section, otherwise fairly straightforward.
Thank you. I concur, it was a fairly straightforward project and application. I did not have questions for the applicant. Does any committee member have questions for the applicant? Any committee member want to start discussion for this application? Did appreciate that it was a rural community that could definitely benefit from this funding. Okay, would any committee member like to identify co-benefits or concerns related to this application? Sam?
Hi, um, this one, I'm not seeing my note about whether or not it had a customer portal. Or am I, did I get missed? Is this one just straight water meter replacement and not including a customer portal?
I believe that the applicant is here, so we'll have him introduce himself, and then we will answer that question.
Thank you.
Probably need to unmute. Yep, so there's a button on the top, just press it till it turns green. There's an instruction card there, too, if you need it.
I believe you can hear me now. Thank you. Madam Chair and committee member, I appreciate that.
And don't forget to introduce yourself as well.
Oh, I apologize first. Steve Lee with the law firm of Mois Sellers and Hendrick, Hendricks, excuse me, I'll get that right. I'm here on behalf of Watco, the applicant in this case. To answer your question briefly, the intent is to have a customer portal. Now, the real question I think that you may be asking, I'm going to dive just a little bit deeper because there's two types. There's one portal that basically will allow you to get the feedback and have somebody call and, and tell the customer, you know, this is what your water, water loss has been over a month or so, something of that nature. There's also the type of, of advanced meter that actually gives you four hour feedback. It's like real time feedback, so you can catch those least, those leaks on the customer side. That all depends upon the meter that you get, the price of it. And, and more importantly, in these rural areas, whether or not you have the infrastructure to give you that real time communication. We are hoping that we can get advanced meters that will give us the real time data. But I don't want to sit here and tell the committee that absolutely we know it's going to be there. Because frankly, we don't control the internet. We don't control the, the towers up in that area, it's pretty rural. And it's got a lot of hills and various issues. And some, some places in this community, you can have the real time feedback, other places you can't. So I hate to give you that great lawyer answer of it depends, but that's what we're shooting at here. We would hope to give real time feedback, but we're not sure it's, it's feasible. We hope to see it. We'll go from there. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have a question for the applicant. So an unincorporated area, and who, where is the water coming from to these customers?
Madam Chair, Committee Member Young, it is actually groundwater. It's pumped right from fractured rock aquifers. There's no renewable resource in this area. So that's why it's so critical in this case, because whatever's pumped out is lost forever and ever and ever until you get snow recharge and percolation. That's why it's so critical to have good infrastructure and good feedback and, and not lose water in these places in Navajo County and Cochise and Apache County, because there's no renewable resources for these items.
Okay, thank you for that question. I'd like details on the groundwater, and I didn't really ask the question correctly. But who, who's the water provider? Is Watco a utility?
Yes, Watco is a utility.
Oh, I missed that. I missed that you are the utility. So you're providing water to like a pretty rural area, unincorporated area.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. We appreciate you coming and, and joining us today. Thank you. All right, additional discussion? Um, all right. Co-benefits or concerns that folks would like to identify? I do appreciate the applicant's acknowledgement that they will try to provide the real time and also understand that that can be quite difficult in these rural communities. So that's great that where it's possible, they'll be doing that. It is a groundwater dependent system in a rural community. Any additional co-benefits or concerns?
Relatively low cost per acre foot for the category.
Excellent, thank you. All right, do we have any public comment on this application?
No requests, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Any additional thoughts, comments or concerns on this application from the committee? All right, we will move to 5.45 Parkway Plaza.
All right, so Parkway Plaza is doing business as Sierra Pacific Mobile Home Park, has requested just above a hundred and eighty, eighty thousand dollars to add approximately two hundred and seventy-five smart meters to homes which are not currently metered for their system. We did know, and not to steal Blake's thunder, but we did know in the feasibility section, it does appear the meters have already been purchased and that federal procurement requirements would have to be met for any cost to be reimbursed with grant funds. And then also just noted, it was difficult to verify the water savings since the individual homes are not currently metered, so.
Okay, thank you. And I see we have the applicant. Can you go ahead and introduce yourself?
PJ, it looks like you are unmuted. You'll just need to make sure that your device is unmuted and speak into the meeting. All right, PJ, I'm going to send you a chat in the Zoom and see if we can get you unmuted that way. But in the meantime, Madam Chair, I'll let you all just continue with discussion until we can get the applicant on.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Does any committee member wish to start with discussion? All right, I, this one, I think the primary concern is related to the procurement processes and where they utilize. We'll give the applicant a moment to see if we can get them on. In terms of co-benefits, we'll skip to that. Would any committee members like to identify co-benefits? I see your hand, Rhett, go ahead.
Home County or Yuma County?
Yuma County. Correct, all right. Other co-benefits that applicants or committee members would like to identify? It is groundwater. Okay, uh, concerns related to this application? We're going to try to get the applicant here in a minute.
Janet, I've gone ahead and unmuted, excuse me, Janet, I've gone ahead and unmuted your mic. If you'd like to speak in, that would be fine.
Yes, can you hear us now?
You can.
Okay.
This is Mike Worth and Janet Chavez for Parkway Plaza.
Thank you. Can you answer the question if you, in these purchases, followed the federal procurement guidelines for ARPA?
Uh, yes, we did.
Okay, and how did you pay for these meters to begin with?
Uh, through out of pocket.
Okay, and were you anticipating applying for this funding as a way to reimburse for those? Or what was kind of your plan in going forward with those purchases?
Yes, we were. We were planning on a reimbursement to, to, to meter up the entire property here.
And when did you complete those purchases?
Oh, I think it's two or three weeks ago.
Okay, so you submitted the application and then made the purchase?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, additional questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, let's see, we will wrap up discussion. Any additional discussion on this application? Sam, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to note, I appreciated the conservation education component to this application and the outreach that they'll do with their customers.
Great, and maybe we can identify that as a co-benefit. Great, and maybe we can identify that as a co-benefit, clear outreach and communication. Erin, did you have something? I saw someone else's hand. No, okay. Great. Uh, any public comment on this application?
None requested, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any last thoughts before we move off this?
I have just one more comment.
Uh, sorry, we're not doing comments from applicants.
Okay.
Sorry, we have so many to get through. I hate to be rude, but we're going to keep moving. All right, we are going to move on to City of Holbrook.
Agenda item 5.46 for the City of Holbrook, who's requested just under $200,000 to do three different activities. So first, to excavate and replace a water mainline. Second, to replace non-functional valves throughout the system. And then third, to install four advanced distribution side meters. We did note the water savings and reported ADWR annual uses in the feasibility section for you, but had a hard time verifying it compared to benchmarks since it was not for customer meters, it appeared, so.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a representative from the applicant?
I don't see anyone with the applicant's name listed, but if you are here on behalf of the City of Holbrook, if you could use the raise hand feature on Zoom or use Star 9 on your phone, we can go ahead and enable your mic. Anybody from City of Holbrook?
From Holbrook, I got questions.
I don't see the applicant, Madam Chair.
I will state my questions. This project appears to have a lot of maintenance components. I am curious how, what portion of this is maintenance and needed actions versus conservation from the applicant's perspective? I would like to know how they are currently planning to complete the funding for this project. I believe this is one where they had started on this and were moving forward. So I would have appreciated more discussion from the applicant in their overall plan. So with that, I will move to additional discussion by committee members. Or if you have questions that you would have liked to ask the applicant, feel free to voice those here in the discussion, and perhaps they will watch it and get back to us.
I kind of echoed your thoughts, Kim, on the valve replacement portion of this. It's about half of the overall funding that they're asking for, but it doesn't really seem to have a direct impact on water loss. Line replacing the meter, like sub-metering, I think is a great practice, and so it's nice to see municipalities putting in district metering infrastructure. Yeah, I had similar thought.
Okay, any additional discussion on this application? Co-benefits, it is a rural community that is groundwater-dependent. These definitely will improve system reliability. On the concern side, I think the concern is whether this is conservation or system maintenance that should be performed. I do concur with Blake that, you know, a portion of this is probably good conservation, but it's hard to tell what that is, and the majority of it, to me, appears on the maintenance side. Additional co-benefits or concerns from committee members?
Madam Chair, I should be using my hand more often. Erin?
No, you can just talk, it's fine.
Okay. Just that this area has experienced a lot of groundwater declines over the years. There's some rebound in the area, but anything to do in this location to save groundwater is especially good, I think, given the regional extent of impacts, not necessarily by the city of Holbrook, but just other development in the area.
Great, thank you. All right, did we receive any public comment on this application?
No requests, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I see Blake?
The only thing, other thing I was going to note is, while, you know, mainline replacement may feel like maintenance, that's the bulk of your loss in a distribution system is the lines leaking. So if I've identified something, I really don't have issue with that. But from a feasibility side, it would have been nice to be able to ask the applicant if the engineering and permitting with ADQ for a project of that size has already been completed because that will delay the process, and so, portion of it here.
Thank you. I will note, in our last round, we were relatively consistent in not supporting mainline replacement as that is a maintenance activity. And I do know that we did have some flexibility on that, so I just will flag that for committee members as you're considering. And I think like you're 100% correct that mainline replacement is often a very good conservation measure. So it's a tricky one. All right, any additional thoughts on this application? Okay, we are going to move on to 5.47 Camelhead Associates.
All right, 5.47 Camelhead Associates, doing business as Picacho Peak RV Park. They've requested just over $205,000 to replace existing outdated meters with the new advanced smart meters. The one extra note I will add, it was somewhat unclear if they have already purchased the meters as they included an invoice instead of a quote, but did also indicate that they would be purchasing once the grant was awarded. So some questions on the procurement process for that, but otherwise.
Great, and do we have the applicant available?
Looks like we do. PJ, your mic is enabled. If you could introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, my name is Paul Jewell from Tier Water Management. Mike Worth is also on the call, the owner of the utility. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, thank you. Can you speak to whether or not the meters have been purchased?
No. No, the meters have not been purchased for this project.
Okay, and do you, it appears you have an invoice in your documentation. Is that just baseline, or how will you be following the federal procurement guidelines, and are you familiar with those?
Yes, we are familiar, and we will follow the federal procurement process. That should have been a proposal, not a, not an invoice.
Okay. Right, I know vendors sometimes send you those, hoping you'll just sign them.
Isn't that the truth?
All right, additional questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we will continue to discuss. Erin, go ahead.
Once again, sorry, I answered my own question.
Oh, that's okay. No worries, there's so much to go through. All right, um, we will move to discussion.
I had, I had one question. You guys are familiar with the ARPA procurement policies. Do you realize that this is a reimbursement-based grant? So you have to expend the money, and then it takes about 60 days before you actually receive it back. Do you guys have the capacity to have that kind of delay in the project, or just to pay for it outright and then wait for reimbursement? It's a larger project for a system of your size.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Anderson. Yes, the client is aware of the process and does understand it. Will have to pay for the project upfront and then receive those funds, the 75% in reimbursement.
Okay, as long as we're going to have the capacity. Good, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, additional questions for the applicant? Okay, discussion by the committee members? Concerns related to this application? I do think it's a very large project for a system of this size, so I appreciate the ambitiousness of the activity and appreciate the applicant's ability to be here and speak with us today. Co-benefits, this is a groundwater-dependent community, and this will identify leaks in a timely fashion. Additional co-benefits or concerns folks would like to identify? Okay, did we receive any public comment?
You don't, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any last comments or thoughts from committee members on this application? Okay, we will move on to the Town of Jerome.
All right, agenda item 5.48, Town of Jerome. They've requested just above $205,000 to replace outdated meters with advanced metering infrastructure designed to transmit data wirelessly and detect leaks. The meters will be installed on residential properties as well as commercial and public sectors. And I do have one correction for the feasibility section, so we staff put that the applicant, so we put the applicant's reported water savings as 12 acre feet annually, but then underneath said applicant stated 2 acre feet annually. That should have said applicant stated 12 acre feet annually, according to their application. So just that one slight correction, and then we have additional notes for the committee in the feasibility section.
Thank you. Do committee members have questions for this applicant? Okay, I thought it was a relatively well-put-together application and a fairly straightforward project. So I do not have questions. Go ahead, Erin.
I do, is the applicant online? I was just wondering about the reported zero acre feet of unaccounted-for loss.
Great, do we have the applicant from Jerome?
I do not see anybody on the Zoom with the name from the Jerome application. If you are here to represent the Town of Jerome, if you could please use the raise hand feature on Zoom, I will be able to enable your microphone. Madam Chair, I do not see the applicant.
Okay, um, we do not have the applicant yet. Perhaps they'll pop up, but Lindsay has some additional information to share.
Just in response to your question, Erin, it, we included the 2023 reported use from ADWR. We also included the 2021 annual reported use, which does show a significant amount of unaccounted-for water, and that would be consistent with how they explain their water savings, stating that there had significant fluctuations, which they believe were due to undetected leaks. So there was a significant difference between the 2021 data and the 2023 data, so just for.
Thank you, Lindsay.
All right, additional discussion on this application? This is, you know, Jerome is a relatively small community, operating in a relatively difficult terrain, like the side of a mountain, with springs that are very locally important. So I thought this was a pretty good project in that regard. Would any committee member like to start with identifying co-benefits or specific concerns related to this application?
Co-benefits, just that it's unique in that it says savings of surface water and spring water, that they're not groundwater-dependent is interesting. Or co-benefit.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Sam.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to add on to that full noting Verde River groundwater basin, and I appreciated that this, that the meters would be installed at residence and public and commercial properties.
Great. Did we receive any public comment on this application?
No requests, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any additional co-benefits, concerns, or comments related to this application? Seeing none, we are going to move to 5.49 Clay Springs Domestic Water Improvement District.
All right, 5.49 Clay Springs, they are requesting just above $235,000 for reimbursement of costs associated with the past and the expected future leak repairs, which they anticipate will reduce water loss from approximately 30% to 20%. Additionally, they're requesting funds for the preparation of a capital improvement plan, or CIP, to complete design, engineering, and procurement documents for the capital improvements needed to address the system's most problematic areas. And I believe those are minutes for.
Thank you. Is this applicant available?
Yes, they are, Madam Chair. Caleb, I have enabled your microphone.
Oh, this is Caleb Brock, project manager for the remote contract operations company that manages Clay Springs.
Okay, so this is reimbursement cost. Did you utilize the appropriate ARPA federal accounting guidelines in your procurement?
Yes.
Okay, and then how did you fund that work?
The, the leak repairs leave in-house, out-of-pocket.
Okay. So in your application, it says reimbursement of costs associated with past and expected future leaks. What are expected future leaks that you have repaired?
So the way we did this calculation is, in the past 31 months, Clay Springs has repaired 62 leaks, which for a system this size represents about nearly 25% of their gross revenue. And so that's about two leaks per month, so we extrapolated that out to the end of the ARPA guidelines of June 2026. And so that puts us at 96 total leaks in the total 48-month timeline.
So you have additional future work that's leak repair?
Correct.
Can you just give us like two examples of what those leaks have been?
Yeah, we can, we have many of the, the lines in the system, many of the roads are granite and graphite. We have multiple, a lot of these lines are well past their lifespan, and so we have four or five leaks on many of the mainlines throughout the system, leak repairs.
Okay, and then, Erin, go ahead. Do you have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm curious. So you're going to develop a capital improvement plan. Do your rate, I'm curious if your rates support, you know, repla, replacement of these old lines? Or if you anticipate you'll have to raise rates to cover, you know, this amount of aging infrastructure?
Yes, so like previously mentioned for the 10 million acres application, the board, this board is also, has been going to board trainings about proper rate settings and capital improvement planning and budgeting for depreciation and whatnot. So they are currently in the process of looking at their rates and budgets and whatnot going forward through that. And they all, and to preface back to the previous question too, all of the past leaks were documented and put into the application.
On the documentation, did that include an estimate of how much water was leaking? And maybe for how long?
Yeah, we just made an estimation of about one gallon per minute, some more, some less than that, but as an average, we took one gallon per minute.
And did you, were you able to document like an acre feet, how much your repairs saved of your lost and unaccounted-for water? I'm just curious, like the dollars per gallon saved, the dollars invested, and the water conservation component?
Yeah, we just took the estimate of one gallon per minute and just extrapolated that out. Over the course of, had the leaks not been fixed, this would, over the course of a year, we would have 155 acre feet per year.
So that's in your chart here, I see.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great, do we have additional questions for the applicant? Just, let's see, moving forward to discussion, does any committee member wish to start with discussion? Go ahead, Erin.
Well, this is an interesting one, I think, because, you know, these small systems, they can really use the funds. And while it's maintenance, if there's a documented acre feet of savings with the the dollars invested by the water conservation program, I mean, I think it's a pretty good return on investment. And I just, I'm going to review this in a little more, a little more closely for how I might go on Monday on this. So, yeah, I don't know. Thanks.
Yeah, Erin, I think. Yeah, Erin, I think you raised a great point. These ones where we're trying to decide what's water conservation versus system maintenance and what is the role of the Conservation Grant Fund in that has been tricky in a lot of these systems. And I think, you know, we've definitely looked at it in multiple ways. Um, co-benefits, this is a groundwater dependent rural community. It's definitely in an area that would benefit. I also appreciate the thoughtfulness in which the district is planning and very much looking at system maintenance and system efficiency. Concerns related to this application from my perspective are really limited to how much of this is maintenance versus conservation work. And I also have some thoughts on whether the capital improvement plan should go towards this funding, although I know that CIPs are absolutely critical to developing long-term management of these systems. Do other committee members would like to identify concerns or co-benefits? Thank you all. Do we have any public comment?
None requested, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, I will do one more call. Does any committee member have any last thoughts? Okay, we are going to move, Mr. Ween, you are here for Southland Utilities, is that correct? Okay, thank you. We are going to, just so folks know, we're gonna finish Southland. And then we are going to move to Glendale, which is our last application to allow the folks who are here in the room with us to get done before we break. So with that, I'll turn it to Lindsay and we'll do Southland.
Absolutely. So 5.50 for Southland Utilities, they are requesting just above $236,000 to install approximately 600 advanced meters in order to reduce loss from outdated and inaccurate metering. We have a few notes for you in the feasibility section, but otherwise, nothing to add.
Excellent. I found this to be a straightforward application with fairly straightforward project. We will go ahead and have the applicant come up. I do know that there'll be one question here for you. If you can go ahead, turn that on and introduce yourself.
Yes, good afternoon. Steve Ween with the law firm of Moysellers and Hendricks here for the applicant.
Excellent, thank you. In this one, will the customers have access to the data in real time and access to the portal?
So that's really the key question. Again, I'm gonna repeat my answer because it's it's the honest answer to give you in all of these rule settings. The the hope is to get the AMI advanced meters that allow for, you know, four hour is usually what they're standing, four hour reports, so you can see real time if there's water loss on the customer side. The reality is sometimes the rule infrastructure just isn't there to do it, where it's gonna cost another $100,000 to do it. So it's not practical. But the fallback position, of course, is that you get the the other style of of advanced meters and you can check those, and they'll send reports back to the company, but not the portal of the of the of the customer. But the company would be able to get data, you know, on a on a more, not a monthly basis, but you get it on a weekly basis. You can get reports. That works out well. So it's just a question of how fast are you gonna get it? And hopefully, in Southland, this is near this year, Vista area, it's flat. It's it's infrastructure is much more developed than a place like Navajo County or Apache County or Greenlee County. So the odds are pretty favorably that they should be able to get some, you know, real time data. That's the hope. But nobody's gonna know until you go out there with the people with the meters, they're gonna tell you. So nobody sitting here in my position, unless you're in Phoenix or Tucson or somewhere that's done it, you know, in that area is gonna be able to say, yes, we're gonna have this. It may be the goal. But the truth is, you may have a little bit less of a time delay on getting that data.
Great, thank you. Do we have additional questions for the applicant? Go ahead, Blake.
Um, I just want to confirm that the applicant has the cash flow that you think they can make the reimbursements in time and follow that schedule and complete this project by June 26.
Fair question. The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Additional questions for the applicant? Erin, go ahead.
Thank you for seeing my hand. I couldn't find my hand on the thing.
Oh, yeah, I can see them all.
So replacing outdated meters to reduce water loss. So you're gonna replace meters and you might have better accounting. Are you anticipating the water loss, more water losses on the customer side or the water loss is on the customer's side? Did I hear that?
Well, the the correct answer is the data that you're looking at, the numbers that you're looking at is just on the company's side. What these meters, I I believe, I forget which applicant said it, but it it was correct that when you get these advanced meters, what you're able to do is basically create a grid that will show you where the water loss is because you're getting so many data points from the system. You can then track and see which main lines are leaking. And to be brutally honest with you, most of your mainline leaks and customer and water system leaks are on those service lines right near where the meter is connecting to. If those meters have been in the ground for 10 or 12 years, you'd usually develop leaks that are in service lines or close to the meters. You also get lower reads, and so you're not tracking the numbers correctly. So 5,000 gallons may go through the meter in a month, but as it's registered, but you really may have had 8,000 gallons. So what you'll see when meters are replaced is that customers are much more diligent about their water use. It's tracked both on the on the company's side and the customer's side. And that's why you get such good numbers in reducing the water loss because you're able to pick up where the leaks are 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 most prevalent. You can repair and replace those lines, and the customers get their feedback through their bill, honestly. Even if it's not through a portal, you'll get it through your bill that, hey, there's something going on on my side of the meter. So you get to see a lot of water loss that isn't even accounted for in these numbers. You'll get water loss reductions on the customer's side, and that's that's a big number usually.
Great, thank you. All right, additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move on to discussion by the committee. Thank you, Mr. Ween.
Thank you.
Again, I think it's a relatively straightforward application. Appreciate the applicant's confirmation that they can meet the guidelines and have the capital available to do the work and get reimbursed. Are there any additional co-benefits or concerns that committee members would like to identify? Rhett, go ahead.
Just in a complicated and strained groundwater area with the San Pedro and in Cochise County, we don't have a lot of applications from Cochise.
Excellent. Additional co-benefits? Go ahead, Colin.
Rhett, Rhett got it for me, upper San Pedro watershed.
Good job, Rhett. All right. Do we have any public comments on this application?
No requests, Madam Chair.
All right, we are going to move on to agenda item 5.66, review of application for City of Glendale.
Thank you. City of Glendale has requested $3 million in order to replace approximately 56,400 water meters and fully connect them to a new AMI system. The project anticipates being able to improve water use tracking, leak detection, and customer access to real-time data. We included a few notes in the feasibility section regarding total water use, but otherwise, nothing else to add.
Thank you. I felt this was a pretty straightforward application, had a good return on investment, and did not have questions for the applicant. Does any committee member have questions for the applicant? They are here in the room if you do. Okay, we will move on to discussion by committee members. Again, relatively straightforward. We have worked with Glendale in the past. Lindsay, has Glendale completed their previous applications or how far along are they?
So they have two previous applications related to turf removal. One looks to be at 36% requested in reimbursements from WIFA, and the other is showing 0% requested. But again, that's requested and reimbursements from WIFA might not be how far along they are exactly.
Okay, would the applicant please come up? Okay, can you introduce yourself and make sure you're turned on?
Looks good.
Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanne Toms. I'm the environmental program administrator for the City of Glendale Water Services Department.
So on your other two applications, you are 36% and 0% reimbursed. Do you anticipate being able to complete those two previous projects?
Yes, Madam Chair and committee members, the City of Glendale does anticipate using all of the grant funds to complete those projects.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions for the applicant?
I have a question. The other two applications, what were they for? I thought the City of Glendale had a meter replacement application previously.
Oh, they did not have meter. It was both turf. Lindsay can give us the names.
Yeah, it's both turf related, and I can give you the names if you need them.
I'll take your word for it. That's, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I do appreciate the application. Like I said, I think it's a pretty straightforward, good return on investment. My only consideration or concern is, you know, Glendale has significantly benefited from these applications or this grant fund in the past. They are, however, a large city with a lot of people living there. So it is reasonable to think that additional investment would benefit water conservation in the state. Additional, would any committee member like to identify co-benefits or concerns? Okay, oh, go ahead, Sam.
Hi, for co-benefits, I wanted to know that it's CAP water, groundwater, and SRP water. I think that's the first SRP we've had of the day, and maybe CAP too. I'm following that advanced meters is the best measure of practice. And while this is not a rural application, since it isn't an AMA, I appreciate that Glendale will probably be diligently submitting reports on all of the work that they did and how much water was saved. So we'll have some good data that we can look back on.
Excellent, thank you. Were there any public comments on this application?
None requested.
Excellent. Any last comments on this application? Okay, with that, we are going to break. I think we should choose, Colin, do you want to, when would you like to come back? We can come back in an hour and I will be here, or we can come back in 30 minutes?
30 minutes and I'll get us through one more.
Okay, we are going to come back in 30 minutes, which will be 1:15, and Colin will be directing the ship. So thank you.
All right. The time is now 1:17 PM, and I will call the roll. Blake Anderson.
Blake, we see you online, but you're not unmuted. I'll just note for the record that he is online. We'll have him unmute when he gets back on.
Thank you. Sam Draper. Andrea Gerlach. Not here. Tim Grandy.
Yes.
Rhett Larson.
I'm here.
Aaron Young.
Here.
Kim's absent, and I'm here. All right, thank you. At this time, we're going to go to agenda item 5.56, Global Water, Ocatilla Water Company. Lindsay?
Thank you. So we have 5.56 for the Global Water, Ocatilla Water Company. They requested 1 million, just above $1 million to do their water conservation activity to replace approximately 2,200 manual read meters with advanced meters and related infrastructure. And the proposal also included implementation of data management in a water smart platform available for customers. We had a few notes in the feasibility section regarding the total annual water use for the committee's consideration, but otherwise, no other notes for you.
Thank you. I believe the applicant is present, so do any committee members have questions of the applicant at this time? Yeah, so let's move to a committee discussion, if anybody wants to start that.
And if I may, Colin, I do have a few notes from our chairwoman, Kim Shonick, as she had to step out for a little bit. So I will read those for the record. For item number, for the Global Water, she stated it seems high relative cost. However, the project seems fairly straightforward.
Okay, so I don't think we have any discussion on this. I guess we can move now to co-benefits or concerns. Any of the committee members have? You guys are very quiet coming back from lunch here, I think.
I have to say, Mr. Chair or Co-Chair, I somehow missed reviewing this one. That's why I'm so quiet on it.
That's all right. I'll say, you know, co-benefits are savings of Colorado River CAP and groundwater supplies. Did we receive any public comments on this application?
No requests for public comments.
Okay. Thank you. So now I think we're going to
Yes.
5.51, so we're gonna jump back to you.
That's correct.
Okay. See if I can find that one in my notes here.
And I'll go ahead and introduce it. So we have agenda item 5.51 for the Graham County Electric Cooperative. They have requested $250,000 to replace approximately 2,000 linear feet of water mains as well as valves, fittings, and hydrants for the system. I will note, we staff did not include the ADWR reported water use for this system in the feasibility section. So I'll just read it for the record here. We did review ADWR's 2022 annual report for the system, and deliveries were 602.9 acre feet, with the supplies being 597.29 acre feet, which is slightly confusing to us as supplies seem to be less than with the supplies being 597.29 acre feet, which is slightly confusing to us, as supplies seem to be less than deliveries. But otherwise, no other notes to add for the committee.
Thank you, Lindsay. Let's start with a committee discussion on this one. Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss about this application? Again, to me, this seemed like another water line replacement project. So I wasn't sure about the, how this works with the Water Conservation Grant Fund. We have had a lot of discussion about this type of replacement project. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? We have the applicant online.
If you are here online to represent Graham County Electric Cooperative, if you could use the raise hand feature on the Zoom. I don't see anybody with the same name as the applicant. Oh, but we do. All right. So we do have the applicant online, committee members, if you have an interest in asking any questions. So, and I will read for the record, Kim Shonick's questions for this. I believe the first one is more of a statement, but she wrote, is this for maintenance or for conservation? And then the question for the applicant, I believe, would be, how are you planning to complete funding for this project?
Aaron, go ahead.
Sure, just in addition to Kim's question, I would love an explanation on what part of the application actually is water saving.
So applicant, it looks like you're enabled and able to speak, so if you'd like to introduce yourself, and then you can address a member Young's question.
Excellent. My name is Joshua Bryce. I'm the Water Operations Manager for Graham County Electric. So, a couple of questions. The chairwoman, I think her question was, how do we plan on paying for that? So we have, we have about 50,000 feet of transite pipe, which is asbestos concrete pipe, that is more than 40 years old. And, and this project is the start of trying to replace that, trying to eat that elephant a little bit at a time. We see a significant amount of water leaks on that transite pipe because of its age. And so the water savings comes from getting that pipe out of the ground and getting new pipe in, so that we can avoid those water leaks. And I'm sorry, can we repeat the last question?
Aaron, if you don't mind?
Well, that was my question. Well, I guess, actually, what component of the construction project, or of the proposal? I see that there's a lot of, there's replacing aging infrastructure, replacing gate valves, for hydrants and repaving. How much of the grant, the dollar amount requested, does 100% of the dollar amount, you know, go to actual water conservation savings, or are some of the other activities not part of the actual water conservation savings?
Right. So of the 250,000, about 200 will go towards the replacing of the main line. The rest, obviously, if we're replacing main line, A U Q requires valves at certain distances, hydrants at certain distances. And so if you replace the main line, you have to replace that other stuff as well. And so the majority will go toward replacing the water-saving component, which is the transite pipe replacement.
Is any of the match amount covering the cost of the hydrants and the valves?
Yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all one project. You could say that that match amount is covering that. That would totally, we can do that for sure.
Okay. I'm just, yeah, I'm looking at the proposal and trying to understand it, so, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Again, we've got, we've got about 50,000 feet of this in the, in the ground. We've got to just start eating the elephant one bite at a time. And so we'll take this and get as much done as we can, and then next year, we do a little bit more.
Do any other committee members have questions of the applicant? Go ahead, Tim.
Do you do this in-house, or is this done by a contractor?
We do this in-house.
Well, what's, what size pipe are you putting in?
Six-inch mains.
And it costs you guys $168 a foot for six-inch line?
The six-inch doesn't cost that much. It's, when you replace the main line down the street, it's all the services, the hydrants, the valves, everything else associated with that main line that moves that total project cost up. But just putting in six-inch main, we can do that for much cheaper than that $168 a foot, yeah.
All right. What, what type of pipe are you putting in? I mean, is this steel or?
C900 PVC.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions from the committee? All right, thank you. Would any committee member like to identify any co-benefits or concerns with this project?
Mr. Chair, Co-Chair, Aaron Young, just savings of groundwater in the Stafford groundwater basin in a new applicant.
Thank you, Aaron. Go ahead, Rhett.
Graham County, we don't have a lot, a lot of applications from Graham County.
Yeah, that's a good call out. Thank you. Okay, any public comments on this application?
No requests for public comment, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll move to Agenda Item 5.52, Golden Valley Improvement District.
Thank you. So the Golden Valley Improvement District has requested $250,000 for their activity to purchase and install new AMI meters for their system. I will, let's see. We have a few notes for you in the feasibility section, but otherwise, no real notes for you to add.
Thank you. Is there any committee discussion at this time? I did have a question about this application. With the personnel costs, they seem kind of high for this application. So $250,000 in equipment costs versus $62,500 for personnel costs. Do we have the applicant?
It doesn't have, or I don't see anyone. Oh, Kelly S. I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to talk. You'll have to unmute yourself, but then you can speak in, introduce yourself, and answer the chairman's question.
Hi, this is Kelly Stickrath, Operations Manager for Improvement Districts for Mojave County. The $62,500 is the matched amount that we would be using to also included for the total of $312,500, just to purchase meters.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Do any other committee members have questions for the applicant?
Colin, I have a couple from Kim, if you don't mind. So, questions from Kim Shonick. She asked, how many meters are you installing in total? And then how many meters do you have?
So, we are planning on installing about 1,500 meters. We currently have 250 installed already.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, the applicant?
I was gonna ask, are you planning on using the initial 250 as getting reimbursed for that cost that's already being expended? And if so, was that done in accordance with the ARBO guidelines?
So, we haven't, we're not planning on any reimbursement on the project, right? You know, that we've purchased meters already, but we're not planning on being reimbursed for those purchases. And this would be going forward, and our procurement department would help us in the process of getting those smart meters. So we would be following the WIFA guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Would any committee member like to identify any co-benefits or concerns with this project?
I just appreciate on this one that all the money goes straight to just buying the meters. They could have tried to recoup the cost of installations, or, you know, they didn't really represent that well, I feel like, in the application of how much they're contributing. But most of these applications were seen $100 to $150 per meter in an installation cost alone. So that's effectively double what they're asking. And so I appreciate that personally.
Thanks, Blake. Rhett, you have your hand up?
This is one of only two applications from Mojave County this round, and that's a pretty groundwater-stressed area.
Yeah, that Sacramento basin is very groundwater-stressed, so that's a good, good co-benefit. Thank you, Rhett. Okay, any public comments for this? Oops, Sam, go ahead, sorry.
No, you're good. I was just going to add that it's the two best manager practices and selling the smart meters, and then also the element of the customer portal. And education outreach.
Great. Thank you. And no public comments?
No public comment requested, Mr. Chair.
Do we need to skip 5.53 and come back to it later?
Oh, that's right. Just tell the general counsel, no, even with Kim being absent, you will still have five. That is still a quorum.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, so at this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5.53, Voyager at White Mountain Lakes Water Company. Lindsay?
Thank you. So we have Voyager at White Mountain Lakes Water Company requesting just under $300,000 for reimbursement of costs associated with the past leak repairs, as well as with future expected leak repairs. Additionally, they're requesting funds for the preparation of engineering and procurement documents related to multiple main line replacements, which would be identified for high risk of failure. We included a few staff notes in the feasibility section. Nothing else to add.
Thank you. Is there any committee discussion at this time? Again, this project kind of stood out to me as operations and maintenance. Wasn't totally convinced of the water conservation component of that. I'm not sure what other committee members thought.
I agree, Mr. Chair, Aaron Young.
Okay, do we have the applicant online?
We do. Caleb, your mic is enabled. Same thing as before. Just go ahead and introduce yourself, and then you can answer any questions.
Oh, yeah, Caleb Brock, Product Manager for the Contract Operations Company that manages Voyager.
Caleb, you're busy today, so thank you. We appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Brock about this project?
Colin, I can start off with a few questions that Kim provided, and she did provide a few, so I'll just read one at a time here. So if you could answer, what portion of this work has been completed?
Currently, we have, we took over the system in 2022, and since 2022, we have reduced the water loss to, by 10%. And currently, we have done about, I don't have the number offhand of how many leak repairs we have done currently, but it should be in the application listed with all the leak repairs and the associated costs with them.
And then the second question, so what are the benefits of the completed work? I heard you say reduce the water loss to 10%. Is that correct?
Yeah, our goal is to, currently, right now, we, we, originally, it was over 30% two years ago, and we have currently reduced the water loss to 21%. And we hope that with the installation, and when we turn on the smart meters, that the, the leak detection equipment will light up the system like a grid, and we'll be able to reduce that water loss to sub-10%. I did want to note two things for this application. One, the community of White Mountain Lakes is one of the poorest in Navajo County, and you can find more on that in Section 14 of the application. As well as, two years ago, the sole owner-operator of the system died with no will or no heir, and leaving the system in a state of crisis. And since then, the system is currently in the process of being purchased. But with all the complications with the estate, there's no way to know when that will be officially completed. So that puts this system not in the ability to be able to take on any debt. So this kind of funding is the only funding that's available for the system.
And then, Ms. Shonick had a few more questions. So she asked, how was it funded for the cost already incurred?
Out of pocket.
And then, how much of the current award has been spent?
About 80%.
80%. And then final question, what portion of this funding is for the engineering and design?
That would be 120,000, to be able to prepare some of our more problematic sections and already high-failure areas, to kind of have some shovel projects ready to be able to pursue with our own internal capital in the years to come.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions from other committee members or the applicant at this time? Okay, thank you, Mr. Brock.
Thank you.
Would any committee member like to identify co-benefits or concerns?
Mr. Chair, Aaron Young, co-benefits is groundwater savings in the Cholo area, or the White, are we in Cholo? I'm sorry, White, White Mountain Lakes area, LCR basin. And then I do see, I'm struggling with these, where it's leak repair done in the past, and then procuring future leak repairs. So that would be a concern.
Thank you, Aaron. Anything else on this application? Have we received any public comments?
No requests, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on, and move on to Agenda Item 5.54, Avra Water Co-op Incorporated.
All right, so we have Avra Water Co-op, who's requested $399,000 for their activity to purchase and install new AMI meters in their system located in Tucson, Arizona. We did do a corrected water savings for this, annual water savings for this application, and included notes regarding that correction in the feasibility section. And that's all my notes for you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by the committee at this time? Do we have the applicant online?
Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone on the Zoom with the applicant representative name, but if you are here to represent Avra Water Co-op, if you could use the raise hand feature on Zoom, I will be able to enable your mic.
So the question that I have for the applicant is to clarify the number of meters that are to be installed, because we have a discrepancy of approximately 150 meters. So I think we're a little unclear on the total number that are planned to be installed here, and so I think it would be good to know that number from them. Are there any other questions for the applicant that we can record right now from committee members? Go ahead, Blake.
Thanks, Colin. My only question would just be about procurement. It looks like they've already selected their vendor, just to make sure that went through the appropriate channels.
Thanks, Blake. Any other questions for the applicant? Sam, go ahead.
My question is, I see that it has, that they'll be able to detect leaks and then let customers know. And so I was curious what the mechanism is, if it's a software, oh, wait, no. Oh, yeah, I think it's just a little bit vague to me, if the customers have access to it, or if the utility has access to it. or if the utility has access to it, and then they'll relay the info.
Great, thank you, Sam. Are there any other questions? If not, let's move on to co-benefits or concerns. So I guess it's saving groundwater in the Tucson AMA groundwater basin. I'd like to note that. Anything else?
And Colin, if I may, I don't, I don't know if these are co-benefits or concerns, but they are general discussion items from Kim to read for the record. So she stated water savings may be an overestimate, however relatively cost low, is low, and is even, even if it was doubled, would be within the range of other projects, and stated otherwise, it seems like a straightforward meter project.
Thank you, Lindsay and Chairman Shonak for your notes, even though you're not here, we appreciate that, so. Very thorough, that's great. Did we have any public comments on this application?
No requests for public comment on this one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to Agenda Item 5.55, Black Canyon City Water Improvement District. Lindsay?
Thank you. So they're requesting just above 502,000 for the Black Canyon City Water Improvement District's application. They are proposing several activities, so they plan to remove and replace asbestos cement and galvanized distribution water lines. They plan to replace approximately 300 residential meters, and then they plan to replace the production meter at the well site. We did add a few notes in the feasibility section regarding the water savings, and also noted that if the well meters are inaccurate, then the unaccounted-for estimates may also be inaccurate. And with that, turn back to you, Colin.
I did have questions for WIFA staff, because I know that this application is similar to a water supply development fund application that they've submitted. And I was wondering if there's a clear distinction between the two applications, or if they're covering kind of the same ground.
That is a great question, and I will check right now what we have on file for the water supply.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
But yes, we did note that the applicant had applied for the water supply fund for water line replacements for just over $1 million, and it was unclear if those costs were directly related or if they were separate costs, so.
Thank you. Is there other additional discussion among committee members for this application?
Committee, it does look like we have the applicant with us, if you have questions for them.
Did Chair Shonak leave us with any notes on this one?
Thank you, Colin, she did. So she has two questions and then one statement. So she stated, "The water main replacement does not appear to be a conservation direct activity." And she asked, "Could the applicant move forward with the meter-only project?" And then the second question, "Are there other funding options for the water main?"
We have the applicant online, so we can direct those questions to them.
I believe so. So Elaine, I've enabled your mic. If you could just introduce yourself, and then you're able to speak. Elaine, it looks like you are unmuted on Zoom, so you may need to check your audio and make sure that Zoom is picking up the correct microphone for your device. Okay, Elaine, I do still see, okay, and now it looks like you're muted. You'll be able to unmute yourself and speak into the meeting. All right, committee, I will work with Elaine on the side to try and get her mic situation figured out, but you can continue to discuss the application.
Are there any other questions or things that we'd like to discuss about this application? We're still not hearing the applicant. Go ahead, Blake.
Thanks, Colin. I guess I'm just wrestling with the main lines. I know that the committee in our initial round really wrestled with these, if they're a maintenance item or not. I think that the meter replacement programs are just as much of a maintenance item. Maybe it's an upgrade in technology overall, but the mains do address water loss in a pretty significant way. I mean, that's where the bulk of the lost revenue is going. And so kind of wrestling with these projects as we look at them in this route, and realizing that they do have a direct savings, but they also have other sources of funding that's available that they can go and access. So I'm just curious to know if committee members stop while we wait.
Yeah, I think that's, like you've said, Blake, that's something we've discussed in depth is, is it O and M? Or is it water conservation? So I think that's a really good point to raise.
Mr. Chair, committee members, I'm still not hearing from the applicant, and I'm not sure what the issue is.
I'm having a hard time unmuting my system. Can you hear me? Oh, well, praise God. I'm Elaine Clayton. I'm the new chair for the water board, and obviously new at learning how to use the microphone. I appreciate the comments that I've heard, especially regarding the water lines. As Southland Utilities, so eloquently stated, we have water lines that are 50 years old, the transite, and they are so frail that there are leaks coming from those lines that aren't necessarily, to the extent that they bubble up and you see them coming up to the ground surface, but they are absolutely there. And we have had to repair numerous breaks just in the time that I've been the chair for three months due to these aging lines. And we have more than 300 meters to replace. We'd have about 350. Most of our meters are about 50 years old, and I'm tracking zero usage. And last month, we had 176 meters that indicated zero usage. And when you go out and you look at them, they're, they're just old, and there are magnets that kind of, it was explained how they work, I can't explain it back. And so the, the loss of water, not only to the district, but on the customer's side, is significant. And we do not have meters on our wells. We need to put meters on our wells that, so that we can see how much water we're producing. We have a well that's being repaired now, and so we're installing a meter. We have a new one that's being dug, and a meter will go there. But we have four wells with no meters, consequently, cracking the exact loss would be difficult. But I'm, I'm going to say it's at least 35% of it just being wasted. It's, we're producing it, but we're, we're losing it in the flow from the well to the customer.
Yeah, 5.55.
Thank you. This is Kim Shonak. I just wanted to say I've been, I'm back, and appreciate.
Colin, the camel has moved, we must have needed it.
Thank you for those, those comments, and I will open it up to any additional questions for the applicant?
Chairwoman Shonak, I believe you had some questions of the applicant that we didn't address yet.
Okay, let me check.
Oh, but she is now, yes.
Oh, is that not the applicant?
This is the applicant, yes.
Oh, okay. Great. Erin, I will go to you if you have a question for the applicant.
I was gonna repeat your, which I think it's your question, and a number of us had. How much of the water conservation is attributed to the AC main replacement? Did we get an answer for that? And maybe there isn't one, if the applicant did try to explain. It sounds like the system is just in dire need of investment.
That, that is correct, but I think there are areas where the, the loss of water, the waste of water is significant, and it's those areas with the transite piping. We are actually, RCAC, the Rural Community Assistance Corp., was here, and we did, they did a site visit, so we are, are going to be able to do that capital improvement plan. But we're also going to be able to determine exactly where the greatest loss of water is, is coming from. And some of it is from the, the really old pipes that are so frail. It's not from all of the pipes, but from the 50-plus years that are transite.
Great. And then, which portion of the funding is for the meters versus pipe?
So we need about, the meters would, to replace all the meters for resident, the residential would be 300,000, and to put meters on the four wells, I think the meter is 3,000, and I'm not sure what the, the labor would be.
Great, thank you. So approximately perhaps over half is for meters and half is for replacement of water lines?
I would say 25% would be replacement of lines and 75% meters.
Okay, would you consider a reduced amount that just focused on the meters? Or do you feel like you have to combine these activities?
We will take what we can get, so if it means a reduction, so be it.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate your, your comments and can very much sympathize with the cost of these water lines and the complexity of dealing with aging infrastructure. So thank you for joining and providing that input. Do we have additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move on to discussion. Does any committee member wish to start discussion on this application? I think just in terms of general comments, it is clearly a system in need of investment. It is definitely a worthy project. It is, again, that tricky complicated space of mainline replacement versus direct conservation and what is maintenance, and I know we wrestled with that. And we continue to wrestle with that question. And so I think we'll each have to kind of think through this application as we move forward. In terms of co-benefits, this is a groundwater-dependent system in a rural community. It definitely will improve system reliability in an area where there is not a lot of other funding options. Concerns, goes back to my primary concern of just that balancing of system maintenance and ongoing investment and the conservation benefits. Are there other co-benefits or concerns committee members would like to highlight? Go ahead, Erin.
Just that it's a new application in an area, we, I don't think we've seen many in the Agua Fria groundwater basin.
I think that's correct, Colin.
I was just gonna mirror the Agua Fria basin comment.
Yeah, definitely a very imperiled river, so it's a good place to do work. Okay? All right, did we receive any public comments on this application?
No requests, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Okay, so we will move to any last comments on this application? Okay, we are going to move, thank you so much, Elaine, for being here. We already did Global Water. We will move to Desert Water Co-op.
Yes, we have Agenda Item 5.57 for Desert Water Co-op. They have requested just over 1.19 million dollars for their activity to replace all main and service lines, install isolation valves, and then upgrade aging meters with the advanced cellular meters to improve system efficiencies and support future repairs. Let's see, we did add some notes regarding the feasibility in the feasibility section, as well as a few notes regarding the matching funds coming from the in-kind services from members of the systems. Otherwise, no notes to flag for you.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant online?
We do, Madam Chair. Paul, I have enabled your microphone. You'll be able to unmute yourself and introduce yourself to us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, board. Can you, can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. So I do recognize this is a rather ambitious project based on what I've observed this morning.
Can you please, hold on, can you please introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Paul Jewell. I'm from Tier Water Management. We're the management firm for Desert Water Co-op.
Great, thank you. And on this application, you have meter replacement and replacement of mainline and service lines, isolation valves. What portion of this application is for replacement of meters versus the other activities?
Approximately 30,000 is associated with just straight meter replacement.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, this utility is, oh, my fault.
One second, we, we have so many to get through. We want to make sure that committee members get to ask specific questions, and then hopefully those get to the points that you want to articulate. But we do want to keep to committee member questions.
Of course.
Thank you. So with that, does any committee member have questions for this application? Okay, one final question. You said about 30,000 is for the meters and the remaining mainlines and service lines. How old are those lines and who installed them?
Approximately 60 years old. I, I couldn't tell you who installed them. I think probably the, when the, when the utility was initially established. The issue we have with this particular utility is about half of the meters are actually in a underground vault at the well site, and they spider throughout the community under lots, under homes, which has made it incredibly difficult to address leaks. So the proposal, while very ambitious, is focused on more or less abandoning the existing lines and running new mains down easements and traditional service lines so that the, the meters are actually located at the property boundary opposed to on the property for the ones that are within the system. Yes, ma'am.
And so with this, have you considered other funding sources?
We have. You know, we, we look at any sources that are available. This utility has also received money from WIFA. They had a lightning strike, which caused their well to fail last year. So they have looked at all funding options available to them.
Okay, thank you. And this is a very large cost. Do you have the ability to expend these funds and get reimbursed for them, knowing that that's a pretty long 60-day reimbursement timeline is what you should probably expect?
It is rather ambitious, and, and I did cover that with the board and the members of the utility to make sure they fully understood that this, this would be a very ambitious project to get done in the timeline, and they feel confident that we can accomplish it.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question. How much cash do they have on hand right now as far as working capital that actually could happen to this project?
Very, very limited, Mr. Anderson. They would ultimately seek a low-interest loan in order to, you know, fund the project.
Bridge funding.
Yes, sir.
Has engineering and permitting been completed on this?
We did, we did do a very preliminary engineering assessment with, with an engineer that we work with just to go over the numbers to ensure that we're on track and that we were asking for, for enough for the size and scope of the project.
But design itself, like actually specified plans?
No, no.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you. Would any committee member like to provide discussion or thoughts on this? Okay, would any, oh, go ahead, Erin.
I just said, it's a pretty I just said, um, it, it's a pretty high dollar amount per acre foot compared to other projects.
Yeah. Uh, would you categorize that also as a concern since we're moving there?
Yes. I jumped ahead.
That's okay. All right. So I think in terms of we'll identify co-benefits and concerns, we'll start on the, the concern side. I think, um, relatively high cost per acre foot compared to others in the category. Also concerned that, uh, funding may not be in place and engineering and design is not completed and ready. There may be permitting needs as well. Um, and this is a very ambitious project to complete within this timeframe. It is, however, definitely a system that could use investments. And it is groundwater dependent, uh, in this system and it would improve system reliability. Are there other co-benefits or concerns that folks want to identify? Okay. Did we receive any public comment on this application?
No requests for public comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any additional discussion from the committee? Okay, thank you to the applicant for being here. Uh, we appreciate the additional input. And we will move on to Valley Utilities Water Company.
You, so Agenda Item five point five eight, Valley Utilities Water Company. They have requested just over one point two million dollars for their, uh, proposal to replace manual read meters with smart meters across their service area and enable real-time water tracking and leak detection.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, this one has a relatively high cost, um, per acre foot also. Uh, is this applicant available?
I believe so, Madam Chair. Todd Allen. I have your microphone.
Yes, Todd Allen, Director of Operations.
Great, thank you. Uh, so in this, your water savings estimate. And, and if you are on both your phone and your computer, maybe mute one. Thanks. We'll see if that works better and if we can still hear you. Uh, your water savings estimate was less than one percent of your system losses. Can you speak to how you calculated your, uh, estimated savings? Todd, are you still there? Todd, go back to whatever you had before, even with an echo. We'll figure it out.
All right, Todd, I'm gonna mute you and then ask you to unmute again and see if that fixes the problem or gets what, what you need to, um, muted. It may have frozen him because I can't even mute him now.
Oh, no. Okay, we're gonna give Todd a minute to come back. Uh, let's go ahead and, um, give him a minute. Todd, if you can hear us, maybe try restarting your system. Um, and we'll, we'll come back to you in just a minute. Uh, let's go ahead and, um, move on to City of Safford, uh, while Todd works out his AV.
We have a few other hands raised for this one, so it may be that there's some other folks, yes.
Let's try Troy.
Troy, why don't you go ahead and, uh, try to speak in? You'll just have to unmute yourself.
And introduce yourself.
Troy Bingham, the City of Safford, I'm the Finance Director.
Oh, you're, you're Safford. Okay. Hold on, we're gonna just one sec, Troy. Do we have anybody else that might be Valley?
Paul, are you here to be able to speak to Valley Utilities?
Um, yeah, I'm communicating with, with Todd. He's trying to log back in. He's, he's struggling to log back in at the moment, so he's
That's what happened. No problem.
I'm gonna recommend a call in.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll be on the lookout for a phone number. Alright, so Chairman Shonak, if you wanna go to the next one?
Yeah, let's go ahead and go to Safford. I'm not seeing him popped up quickly. We'll go ahead and do Safford, uh, while Todd works that out. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Right, so we have Agenda Item five point five nine for the City of Safford. They did request one, uh, just over one point four million dollars to do their conservation activity to purchase new meter equipment and materials. You will see a staff recommendation, um, for a reduced amount on there. The applicant did, in question four, indicate the meter replacement would occur over a ten-year period. Staff, uh, recommended a reduced grant amount for the amount based on the applicant's claim that the total of one point four two two, um, million, just over one point four two two million would be incurred within the allowable timeframe. So we use that as the total cost within the timeframe allowed and then, um, identified the amount of grant available for that one. Additionally, you'll see that with a staff estimate at zero acre feet and that is just due to the applicant's reported water savings being zero acre feet annually. So, um, we have a few notes for you in the feasibility section regarding their annual water use, um, but did not try to guess at what their water savings would be.
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, and Troy, do you wanna go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yeah, Troy Bingham, the City of Safford Finance Director.
Great, thank you. Uh, and in the application, it referenced ten years to implement this as, uh, Lindsay described. Um, and then there's a recommendation for reducing the amount to match what could be implemented within this timeframe. Can you comment on if that reduced amount could be implemented within this timeframe?
Correct. Uh, we're starting a, a cycle replacement of all of our meters, all eight hundred, eight thousand four hundred meters for the next ten years. So this would constitute two years worth of meter replacements.
Okay, so that one point one three million that staff recommended would be an acceptable?
That's an acceptable amount.
And you feel confident you can complete that, uh, in time?
Correct. We have a whole, a whole department dedicated to meter replacement and reading.
Okay, great. Um, and then just really quickly, cause I, I'm curious. It's a surface water system on Bonita Creek. How much of your water is, is surface water versus groundwater?
Sixty percent of our water comes from a surface creek, uh, forty percent comes from groundwater.
Interesting. And do you treat that, uh, surface water?
Because it's so deep underground where it's taken, we are able to exempt from treating.
Oh, okay. Excellent. Uh, other questions for the applicant? I have a lot of questions, but they don't need to be answered here. Um, so let's see. Thank you. Uh, we will go to discussion amongst committee members. Okay. Um, interesting application. I appreciate that it is both a groundwater and surface water system. Generally, the surface water is, is great because if they're taking less of that, that means there's more water, uh, flowing and available for fish and wildlife. So that's, that's kinda cool. Any additional discussion by committee members?
Madam Chair, I, I wanna make sure I understand that they're replacing meters, they're buying two years of, of meter replacements, and then do they have to have those installed with, before June next year?
Great question. Um, Troy, would you have them purchased and installed by the deadline?
Oh, we're, uh, we run all four utilities for our city, so we actually have a large warehouse where we could pre-purchase these and issue them out on the project when they're actually installed. So we could purchase two years ahead of time.
So theoretically, you may do some purchasing, but it may not all be installed.
Correct. But it doesn't get expensed to the project until we actually install it into the ground. So we have the ability to buy and then we can install it at a later time.
Is that an allowable expense if it's purchased by the company and not necessarily installed on the ground?
We would only seek reimbursement at the time that we actually install it and at that time expense it to our system.
But you have, you have to get reimbursed before June next year.
Correct. We could speed up our process. It's eight hundred and forty meters a year for water, so we could do sixteen eighty in two years, in one year.
Before June next year.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Great question, Erin. Anybody wanna comment from that side? Not gonna make one. Uh, go ahead, Blake.
Just wondering why we're assuming that there's no savings compared to all of our other projects. That applicant didn't include any estimations or?
That is correct, Blake. This is Lindsay. Uh, they, they put zero, uh, acre feet estimated, so we did not want to try to make the assumptions for them.
We didn't wanna overestimate. Uh, we currently have smart meters. We're just replacing those after twelve to thirteen years that they've been in the ground. So we didn't wanna claim, uh, additional savings that we initially saw when we started doing smart meters. We are gonna try to get the information out to our, uh, public that they could use the aquahawk feature to monitor their usage. So that's what we hope will increase our acre feet savings, but we don't wanna put anything down that would be, uh, ostentatious or overshot.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I need to reflect on that question, uh, Blake. You know, I, I read that section. I think it is hard to estimate savings. My perspective was we are assuming these are savings uh, throughout these project areas, but again, it is hard to estimate and therefore hard to verify.
Right, especially if they already have the meters in place.
Yeah. Great. Uh, any additional discussion on this project? Okay, and then I think, uh, we started a little bit on co-benefits. It is a, a surface water and groundwater system which can have immediate benefits to freshwater resources. Concerns, it is a very large undertaking, uh, in a short timeframe, uh, but the city does seem confident in their ability to implement. Other concerns committee members would like to highlight? Okay. Any public comments on this one?
None requested, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any additional comments on this application? Okay, with that, I will check, were we able to get Todd from Valley Utilities back?
Looks like they're still trying to reboot the system.
We'll keep going. We'll come back to him. Thank you, Troy. Uh, we will move on to five point six, Town of Eager.
All right. So we have five point six zero, actually. So we're getting close. Close to the end, not to the beginning. Uh, Town of Eager, so they have their request for one point, uh, over one point five million for their spring line restoration proposal. So they are proposing to do a spring line restoration, to restore the line system, um, replacing approximately, uh, just over ten thousand linear feet of twelve, um, twelve inch water line. And then they also plan to add a new chlorination building and add a new storage tank, uh, which would be a three hundred thousand gallon tank. Um, with a staff did add a few notes for the committee, um, in the feasibility section regarding, um, being able to verify the water savings for replacing the water line, just since it's due to specific losses from that water line as well as, um, being, having a difficult time determining if there's savings from the chlorination building or the storage tank proposed.
Thank you. Uh, we'll start, uh, does any committee member have questions for this applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, let me get them to introduce and then we'll
This is just a general concern with this one.
Go ahead and start there.
So in the summary, we have three different items listed. So we have the twelve inch water line replacement and then the chlorination building and the storage tank. And I'm having a really hard time seeing how the chlorination building and a storage tank are conserving water, which is the focus of this committee.
Yes. Would you like the applicant to speak to that?
I, I would be interested to hear what they have to say about that.
Great. So if the applicant, I see you here, if you could introduce yourself.
Uh, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Uh, my name is Brittany Reynolds. I am the Community Development Director for the Town of Eager. Um, and I just wanna take a moment to thank you all for taking this opportunity. We currently are working on, so the chlorination building will be part of the town match. We currently have, we are required, um, by the, um, standards to chlorinate the water at a very small rate. The building is currently unsafe. This line was developed in the forties um, and has been in place. And so our, part of our match would be, um, building up that building and repairing that, making sure that that is in better condition. So it is not asking for funds for that. Um, and then the tank, we actually got some different quotes, um, and we want to upsize the tank from what we currently have. The tank currently in place is roughly thirty years old. Um, and so we do want to up it to at least a five hundred thousand to a million gallon storage tank to also um, increase our storage and supply of water so that there's not so much demand. So we are, um, these funds would be more used for the engineering of, um, the ten thousand linear feet, roughly four miles, and that, um, for the actual construction of the line.
So is the engineering for the line completed and is there any permitting required?
Uh, so I have all, um, permitting on board. We do not have engineering complete yet. Um, but we are talking to our engineering, uh, firm that we already, um, contract with and they're aware of this and they're ready to complete that.
Do we have additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move to discussion. Would any committee member like to start discussion? Go ahead, Rhett.
I'm probably saying things a lot of people are thinking, which is, uh, if the match is for the tank and the chlorination building, uh, then the other investments are going towards line replacement. It gets us back into the maintenance versus conservation question. And
Go ahead, Rhett.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what just happened there. Um, so, and the other, but the other thing is, is we only have two uh, applications out of Apache County, so this is one of the two.
Additional discussion on this application? Would anyone like to identify co-benefits or concerns? All right. Um, in terms of co-benefits, Rhett did bring up, this is one of two applications out of Apache County. I do believe, uh, this would be a first grant with, um, Eager, which would be great to have a new applicant. Um, it is definitely a rural community, um, and again, working off of a spring line, which, you know, water savings would have immediate effects on freshwater resources. Uh, in the concern space, I think whether or not the applicant would be able to complete this in the proposed timeframe, uh, given their current structure and also if they would be able to meet match requirements, um, if they're identifying the chlorination building and storage tank as their match and those don't have direct conservation benefits, they would qualify. Uh, go ahead, Erin.
Yeah, um, I just wanna make sure it's correct that Town of Eager hasn't received any funding cause you, looking at the tool, it looks like they've received one point five or one point four.
Did I miss that? Okay.
I am looking at the old tool. I couldn't open the new one yet.
You are, you are correct, Erin. They have received two previous grants for just above one point four million.
Oh, great. Thank you. Good, good catch, Erin. And how are they doing on spending for those, Lindsay?
Yes, absolutely. I have my notes. Uh, so they, uh, the two grants, they have one at approximately sixty-four percent and the other about six percent spent or requested in reimbursements from WIPA.
Okay, thank you. All right, any, um, any public comment?
None requested, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on this application? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we will move on. Do we have Todd? Todd, can we hear you? Well, Chelsea's gonna unmute. Okay, great. We're gonna go back to Valley Utility. Um, Lindsay, will you just refresh us?
Absolutely. So we are on five point five eight for Valley Utilities. We requested just over one point two million for their upgraded, uh, meter, uh, replacement proposal.
Thank you. And Todd, uh, can you go ahead and introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, Todd Allen, Director of Operations.
Thank you. Uh, on the application, um, your water savings estimate uh, was, let's see. less than one percent, uh, I think a reduction of twelve acre feet would represent zero point six five savings, uh, which would be in line with benchmarks for WIFA staff. Um, so your cost per acre foot for this project was just a little bit higher, uh, than a lot of similar applications, so I was just curious if you could comment on that.
Yeah, we basically just looked at that, excuse me, the accuracy of, uh, the new meter versus the aging, uh, meters, and we just, you know, figured a, a less than one percent, uh, savings for that.
Okay. Go ahead Erin.
I might be getting tired, my brain might be getting tired, but estimating a savings from replacing a meter, the only, you have to still fix leaks, or you have to identify the water conservation component of that, am I missing something?
No, I, I, I think we looked at, you know, leaks on the customer side that once they're repaired, will conserve and save on our end of, you know, less pumping, um, less withdrawal, less electric, uh, you know, the man-hours, uh, for the reading and, and stuff like that.
I see, so letting the customer know and then they make the, they do the leak repairs, so I think my brain is getting tired, thank you.
This is hard when we have so many of one guy that has like all these nuances, right? Oh, I'm with you Erin, oh, okay, additional questions for the applicant? Um, just a question, um, and like you may know the answer, or Lindsay, uh, the meters as they're budgeted, are they comparably priced to other meters that other applicants are purchasing? Do we know the answer?
It's a difficult question Kim.
Okay.
I, I would say based on my experience, yeah, um, typically a meter runs between two hundred and, two hundred and fifty dollars up to five hundred dollars, and then some of them require additional antennas and components that come off of that, so the cost can get higher, this seems pretty much right in mind.
Okay. Thank you, so this one, I just have been trying to understand if the driver here is the way water savings are estimated, or if it's...
I, I think it's the water savings, they're, they're replacing a fair amount of meters, um, compared to some of these other ones.
Thank you, that's really helpful. Okay, uh, let's see, any additional discussion on this application?
Um, I had a question for Todd.
Go ahead.
Um, do you guys have the cash on hand to make this larger purchase and do the installations, or um, are you planning on doing it in phased groups and getting reimbursed as you go?
We would do it in phased, uh, we would have enough, not for the entire project, but enough to get it going, so we would phase it, yes.
Okay, yeah, the, just in case you're unaware, they're looking at, uh, a weekly, or a weekly reimbursement cycles, and so it takes a little while to get that recovered, so for larger projects, that's always kind of a concern.
Right, understand, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, any additional discussion on this?
Can I, can I ask for a clarification?
Yes.
Remind me, I think you just said it, but I missed it, the high cost per acre foot is why?
I think it is because of the way the water savings are estimated as compared to other projects, so their project costs are in line with the number of meters that are being installed, um, but there's variability in the way that the water savings are estimated. And I think, um, that seems to be based on age of system and types of, uh, water savings that the applicant is identifying.
Okay, thanks for helping me with that.
What is your water loss percent, um, Todd's still on the line?
Yeah, our water loss is about five percent.
Oh, yeah, so I mean, even a percent or two probably wouldn't be that far off, um, that's fair.
But then you'll see the reduction on the customer side, like, yeah.
And also the reduction on the plant side of, you know, less withdrawal, less pumping, less electric, etc.
Yeah, there's just not a lot of wiggle room there, you're already pretty efficient at five percent.
Pretty tight.
Great, uh, let's see, I gotta go down my checklist here, uh, co-benefits of this project, uh, it is groundwater, uh, within the Phoenix Active Management Area, so I think this is a best management practice. Uh, concerns, I don't actually have concerns, I will highlight that we do want to clarify, we think the costs are reasonable, I think the costs are reasonable, uh, based on the way the water savings are estimated. Any other co-benefits or concerns committee members want to highlight?
Um, just, uh, it's a new applicant, right? Just making sure.
Lindsay's checking us, I didn't fact check so good on this one last night.
That is correct, it is a new applicant.
New applicant. Excellent, alright, any public comments on this one?
No, Madam Chair.
Any additional comments or discussion on this one? We are going to move to five point six one, Vale Water Company.
Alright, so for Vale Water Company, they have requested, uh, just under one point, uh, six million dollars for their activity to replace approximately thirty-five hundred water meters, um, upgrading to the advanced meters, along with the associated infrastructure that would be required. Um, I don't have very many other notes for you, a few in the feasibility section, but I'll turn it back to you Kim.
Thank you very much, this was a fairly straightforward application, uh, do we have the applicant online?
We do, Madam Chair, so applicant, I have enabled your mic, you'll just have to unmute and then you can introduce yourself to the committee.
Hi, this is Harold Thomas, I'm representing Vale Water Company.
Great, thank you, um. Let me get over here to my question. Uh, with these, uh, meters, will the customer be able to see their data in real time?
That's the goal, uh, we have the ability to, uh, provide a portal, and, uh, if the, if the customer has requested, you know, we can, we can set them up to do that.
Great, thank you, and then, um, just this is a lot of funding, are you confident I, in the ability to implement this project in just over a year, uh, knowing that this is cost reimbursable?
Yes, I am, yeah, we, we, we have a, a team set up and we're ready to go.
Uh, do you have the cash on hand to be able to purchase equipment and wait for reimbursement?
Yes, we do.
Uh, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, we will move, any discussion by committee members? Okay, uh, we will move, any co-benefits or concerns applicants would like to raise, or sorry, not applicant, committee members, talk about getting tired. I do think, uh, this is within the Tucson AMA, it is reducing, uh, reliance on Colorado River and groundwater, um. It's relatively cost-effective, uh, given uh, the, the location and the size of the projects. Uh, other co-benefits that folks see? Concerns, I will just highlight, again, this is a lot of funding, um, and a lot of work to do, and just under a year, the applicant seems confident uh, that they can move forward with that. Any other co-benefits or concerns? Any public comments?
No, Madam Chair.
Any additional discussion by committee members? Thank you for being here Harold, we will move on to five point six two, City of Kingman.
Alright, so the City of Kingman is requesting funds for their, uh, meter upgrade proposal to purchase and install the advanced meters and transmitters. You'll see on this one, we did a staff correction instead of a staff recommendation, so um, in the application, it did appear at first that they were requesting two million dollars grant funds with a total cost of two point five million. However, based on the, the budget justification, um, and the budget form that they provided, they stated that the City of Kingman is requesting a total of two million funding in grant funds for smart meter installation. Of the total, one point five would be funded through WIFA funds, and the remaining five hundred would, thousand would be provided as matching funds. Therefore, we did correct this one to be one point five million in grant amount requested. Um, and then additionally, I will just note that they do have a previously awarded grant, um, for meter upgrades for three hundred thousand, so they would still be well below the three million dollar limit, and currently looking to have requested about seventy-five percent of those funds.
Look at you answering my question before I even get to ask them. Alright, um, any questions for Lindsay? Okay, do folks have questions for the applicant? Okay, I do not have questions, oh, well, actually, I do have a question, do we have the applicant?
Looks like we do, Madam Chair, Monica Murphy, I have enabled your microphone, you can unmute yourself and introduce yourself to the committee.
Great, thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, Monica Murphy, Grants Administrator with the City of Kingman.
Great, uh, and then the staff has provided a reduced amount, and I just want to verify you are okay moving forward at that reduced amount.
Yes, and I do appreciate you guys, um, fixing that for us.
Yeah. Alright, any additional questions for the applicant? Any discussion, uh, from the committee? Alright, uh, let's see, we will do co-benefits and concerns, uh, this is City of Kingman, it's groundwater dependent. Uh, the Wallopi Basin aquifer, uh, is definitely an at-risk stressed aquifer, uh, and investment to reduce water use in this area will have benefits, uh, more broadly. Other co-benefits folks would like to identify? Go ahead Sam.
Um, just noting again, appreciating having, the customers having access to the data and the education outreach component that the city plans to do, to make sure folks are aware of how they can conserve and what to do with the information.
Great, thank you, alright, any concerns related to this application? Okay, we will move, oh wait, any, let's see, public comments, any public comments?
No, Madam Chair.
I'm gonna get every box checked this time. Any additional thoughts from committee members? Okay, thank you for being here Monica, we will move to five point six three, City of Douglas.
Thank you, so we have the City of Douglas, who has requested just over two point five million dollars for their activity to, um, uh, have a, uh, assessment of their reservoir and pipeline, followed by a design of, uh, rehabilitation for the reservoir and pipeline. Additionally, they plan to design and construct a secondary storage facility, um, which would be included with this application. Um, we did have the WIFA staff estimate at zero, similar to past, um, applications, the applicant reported water savings was zero acre feet annually, therefore, WIFA staff didn't try to assume what the water savings would be for this. Um, and then additionally, we had a few notes for you regarding the duration of the, uh, proposal, and, um, when the activities would be occurring in the, the duration section, um, which was slightly confusing for us.
Okay, thank you, uh, do we have the applicant here?
We do, Madam Chair, applicant, I've been able to, um, enable your mic, you'll just have to unmute yourself and you can introduce yourself to the committee.
Are you there?
Doritza, I have un, I've enabled your mic, it looks like you are unmuted, so there may be an issue with your device, just make sure that your audio is picking up the correct microphone for your device.
Good afternoon, this is Doritza Villalobos, Grants Coordinator with the City of Douglas, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, so this project, um, you're requesting two point five eight million dollars, when would this work be completed?
Okay, so, I have to correct this application. Because in review of what I submitted, it was incorrect. And it actually should have been just for the planning and design portion and not the construction. And so, this, these activities should be completed by the deadline of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six.
And is the requested amount correct?
No, that's also incorrect, so, we would like to reduce the amount, um, to one million eighty-five. Well, I'm sorry, the total budget would be one million eighty-five, and requesting from WIFA eight hundred thirteen, seven hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, from a process perspective, are we able to adjust this application as we review it on Monday?
Um, yeah, I mean, this, the committee has the authority to recommend a reduced amount for the board's consideration.
Okay, so I would recommend that we adjust the proposal to these amounts, uh, for consideration. Yes, we will, um, so if we can have you say those numbers one more time?
Yes, so, the budget will be, total budget, uh, project cost will be reduced to one million eighty-five. And the city is requesting from WIFA eight hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And we will be providing the match of two hundred seventy-one thousand, two hundred and fifty.
Just tell the General Counsel, I'd recommend they follow up with, uh, an email to Lindsay or team, so you've got those numbers correctly. Um, if and when you do vote to recommend this application, that's when you can recommend to make modifications to the budgets for what they have, but staff can certainly present due diligence with the updated numbers as the notes come in.
Okay, great, thank you, uh, so Doritza, if you could provide that via email this afternoon to, uh, Lindsay, that would be excellent.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Oh, good. There's a zero in there, goodness, good math. Okay, uh, so with that, uh, are there any additional questions for the applicant? Okay, uh, discussion amongst committee members, uh, I will reiterate that we would like to review this application considering the reduced amount, um, with the expectation based on the, the applicant's comments that they could complete that by June twenty twenty-six, it then becomes a planning and design only application, and that would be consistent with the zero water savings. Um, we don't have a lot of other applications that are only planning and design, um, just as a point of reference, but it is an allowable activity. Um, and I think, go ahead Colin.
Um, I just want to say, you know, the City of Douglas is one of our earliest deemed adequate cities in the state, nineteen seventy-three. So, one of the first to come in, and they have limited supplies, so they need infrastructure to make sure that they're, um, using their water resources as efficiently as they can, because there aren't new alternative supplies available there.
Yeah, and there are very limited resources for securing this kind of, um, design activity. Okay. Any additional discussion on this application? Okay, we will move to identifying co-benefits or concerns. Um, I think it's a rural community, uh, that certainly needs investment, it is groundwater dependent. Uh, it is within the newly formed Douglas AMA. Uh, concerns, um, just to highlight that it does not have specific water savings, but does have the potential to create water savings in the future. Okay, uh, did we receive any public comment?
We did not, Madam Chair.
Any additional discussion on this application related to, uh, co-benefits or anything else, concerns? Okay, we will move to five point six four, City of Tucson Water.
Thank you, so we have the City of Tucson, who has requested, um, three million dollars for their automated metering infrastructure program, the residential phase. They plan to replace approximately twenty thousand residential meters throughout Tucson service area. Um, we do have a staff recommendation of zero for this, due to the concern that this would be, um... due to the concern that this would be continuing funding for a previously funded program, which has received $3 million for their Phase II program, which targeted the residential customers and is still ongoing within this established timeframe. Additionally, we did add one note regarding the duration and just a concern that they had listed December of 2026 as the possible deadline for spending these funds. Otherwise, no notes to highlight for you.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Madam Chair, I saw them earlier, but don't see the applicant now. If you are on for the City of Tucson, if you could please raise your hand. I think Sylvia is who I had on. But right now, I don't see them. I'll let you know if they pop back on.
Okay, we will move to general discussion of this application. I appreciate staff's attention to detail in identifying the connectedness of this project with the previous project. Can you clarify how much of their past funding has already been spent?
So I have them for all of the different grants. I'll read them out, and then I will figure out which one is for their Phase II one. But they have 6%, 6%, 0%, 16%, 5%, and 7%, so all relatively low. And then the one for the, make sure if there's too many different grant numbers. Let me make sure I get the right one. The one for Phase II for the residential customers was the WC 5218 proposal, which is at 16%.
Okay, so they are the furthest along in that one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any additional discussion from committee members on this application? Identification of co-benefits or concerns. It is within the Tucson Active Management Area. It does reduce reliance on Colorado River water. It is a fairly straightforward application with relatively low cost per acre foot savings. On the concern side, this is a continuation of a past program and therefore may not be allowable under the statute per the staff recommendation. City of Tucson has been a recipient of much funding in the past, and they have not completed the previous application related to this area of work. Are there other concerns or co-benefits that committee members would like to call out? Okay, do we have any public comment?
Madam Chair, we did have one request from the applicant. So Sylvia, I still do not see you online. If you're on under another name, if you could just use that raise hand feature. Otherwise, and it does not look like she's on, so we can move on.
Okay, we will keep on going. Let's see, any additional discussion on this application? Okay, we will go to City of Prescott, 5.65.
All right, so 5.65, City of Prescott. They have requested $3 million for their water meter replacement program. This applicant said would be the second phase of the previously funded program to replace approximately 5,6400 water meters with modern meter technology. Similar to the last application, WIFA staff is recommending a $0 recommendation for this to ensure that Prescott does not receive more than $3 million per program since they were awarded a previous grant for their Phase I of their water meters totaling $3 million. It does look like they've requested about 67% of that back from us currently. And then additionally, we did do a WIFA staff corrected water savings of zero acre feet annually, and that was due to it appearing to be the claiming the same water savings as the first application.
Okay, thank you. And I see the applicant is on. If you can go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Steve Olford, Utilities Manager with the City of Prescott.
Thank you. Can you comment on if this is a different program from the past or truly a continuation of your past work?
This is a direct continuation. We're moving through the city, so we've completed about 25% of the meters with our last grant, and we're looking to continue that process and progress.
Thank you. Any additional questions for City of Prescott? Okay, we will move to discussion amongst the committee. I think my general discussion follows along with, you know, this is a continuation of the program. I do applaud Prescott in having completed so much of the work already, so thank you for that. Any additional discussion by committee members? Okay, would any committee member like to start with co-benefits or concerns? Okay, I think in terms of co-benefits, it is within the Prescott Active Management Area. It is a definitely a groundwater stressed community. On the concern side, I think it's that the City of Prescott has already received $3 million for a similar program and that it's a continuation of that same program. Let's see, any additional co-benefits or concerns? Are there any public comments on this fund application?
There are not, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any additional discussions? Thank you, Stephen. Any additional thoughts? Okay, so we are going to go back to Parker. I believe that the representative from Parker was able to join us, and we did have some questions. I have to go back and find them, so if you can go ahead and raise your hand, we'll have you introduce yourself and we'll revisit that application.
And committee members, for reference, that is number 5.39 on today's application.
Thank you. And Lindsay, are you, can you pull that up and just give us the quick two-minute reminder?
Absolutely. So we'll get it on the screen here in a second, but we have 5.39 for the Town of Parker. They have requested just over $34,000 for their activity to rehabilitate well number six in order to restore the well's efficiency and then add a VFD pump motor to improve energy efficiency and reliability for the water system.
Great, thank you. So let's see, we have John Luther. Are you, let's see, I'm able to talk yet? Can you go ahead and introduce yourself, please?
Yes, good afternoon, John Luther, Grant Writer for the Town of Parker, Arizona.
Thank you. So this application does appear to improve system reliability and be a benefit to the community and their overall water supply, but does not have clear conservation outcomes. This appears to be needed maintenance on the system. Can you comment on whether this work is in fact new work that you would do for conservation purposes, or is this part of an ongoing maintenance program?
No, so this is a one-time maintenance, a much-needed maintenance because of the well doing a number of things, corrosion, tuberculating, and as well as ongoing sediment pileup. It's suspected by the town due to ongoing chronic and growing water loss from the tank that there is some collateral damage as a result of the condition of the tank that is leading to water loss on an ongoing chronic basis. This seeks to rehabilitate the well first off and uncover needed repairs, which the town would undoubtedly be required to do due to the condition of the tank. However, you are correct that the water reliability and efficiency piece of this, that is kind of the hallmark of this request, but there is some water conservation impact that is expected from this project.
And where does that water savings, how is that created by this project? Can you just walk us through that?
Yeah, yeah, the various suspected pinhole leaks and cracks in the well. The town believes that it is continually seeping and losing water into the ground. It is the intent of the Town of Parker for to rehabilitate the well and do any needed repairs in order to fix those cracks and holes.
Great, thank you. Are there any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you. We have already discussed this application. If any committee member wishes to add co-benefits or concerns, please speak up now. Okay, thank you so much for being here. We're glad you were able to join us and speak to those points. We are now going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is a call to the public. This is the time for the public to comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Have we received any requests for public comments?
We have, Madam Chair. We have three requests. The first is from someone who did not specify an agenda number, but I do want to give you an opportunity to speak. So Ananakai Perranahova, if you are on, could you please indicate that by raising your hand? Okay, I don't see them on, but that's okay. We can go to the next one. We have Benjamin Strizek, so he's been here in the back of the room with us the entire time, so we'll go ahead and invite him up to the front.
Do I need to read this?
No.
Great, thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, Board. Thank you, guys, for all you do, first and foremost. I think you guys have a really cool job with allocating all these funds. I'm grateful for the opportunity to have spoken with you guys earlier this week. I didn't hear from you guys after the meeting, and Joe actually called me this morning, so thank you for that, Joe, and my grant writer, our grant writer at Phoenix Christian. Dinah had some notes that we would like to just share with you guys about our applications. And I'm the Athletic Director, I don't know if I said that. So I'm in charge of all the sports at Phoenix Christian, which is down the street. It's been around since 1949. We serve a diverse population. We prepared this submission for you guys. And two days, I explained this to Joe this morning, two days before the deadline, our eligible entity partner backed out on us. They were forced to back out. So at the last minute, right before the deadline, we called our District Four Representative Laura Pastor, and I didn't actually realize it was Joe when we spoke this morning, but he in turn, she in turn, referred us to Stacy Reynolds, who's a grant and Special Projects Administrator. So in any event, she directed us to, and Stacy Reynolds works for the City of Phoenix Water Services Department, and they graciously agreed to partner with us as an NGO in this project. With those two hours right before, however, it was impossible for them to submit the application for us. So we took a leap of faith, and we uploaded all the materials onto the eCivics, hoping that the attestation from sent out application would permit us to formalize that relationship with the city and be considered for this grant. And obviously, you guys made that determination that we were not eligible for this at the time. We've been working tirelessly the last year. They had me a year ago start with this NFL grassroots grant, and I, not really knowing exactly what I was doing, we filled it out, and we were awarded that grant. And then after the fact, I've been pounding the pavement, fundraising from various organizations. Christ Church of the Valley gave us $125,000 to hopefully share our field with us as to grant. But long story short, we don't have all the money. We are still a little short for this project, and now they're exploring going back to sodding the field, which absolutely breaks my heart because I know how many acre feet. I didn't even know what an acre foot of water was a few months ago, but now I realize the 10.9 acre feet is like 3.5 million gallons of water that's being dumped on that. And it's like 100 yards of dirt, mind you, not at the end of the season. It's not a lush green field because there's so much usage. So we were just seeing if there was any way, shape, or form you guys would reconsider that. I didn't know, I just heard the City of Douglas and the correction they made on their application, if there would be any way that like a Stacy Reynolds could in fact submit this for us. I know it was due, obviously, a few weeks ago, but I would just, we've been stacking all these dominoes to try to make this project happen, and I'm afraid that if...
Okay, sorry.
Oh, sorry, is that my time?
Yep. Thank you.
Grateful for you guys listening today and look forward to working with you guys in the future, hopefully.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, guys.
All right. I will, one more. Go, what next comment?
All right, next up, Madam Chair, we have Carly Cox. And Carly, I have enabled your microphone, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. This is Carly Cox with George Chiro Engineering. I'm our Grants Coordinator, and we represent multiple irrigation districts that you guys have awarded funding for. And thank you, Chelsea, Autumn, and Samantha. Samantha is Aces and super helpful. Just thought I'd take the time to say that, too. I had issue when submitting this last round on behalf of Maricopa Water District. We have two active grants with you. We absolutely have an eCivis account. I had called multiple times to eCivis. I ended up communicating with Samantha for hopefully accepting the submission, even though it wasn't populated in your system. I sent her an email well before the five o'clock deadline. I've not seen MWD pop up on any of the agenda items. I'm hoping that it will be something that you guys might want to consider. It is in the Agua Fria area. While we do have two open grants with you right now, the first grant that we submitted for construction was completed this dryup. I'm working on paperwork to have the remainder of the dispersment sent to you guys as soon as possible. I'm waiting on the district to provide me paperwork for that. I don't know that you can give me any kind of outcome or indication that you guys will consider it, but this project was very unique because it incorporates floating solar. Again, you're in the Agua Fria area, and this is something that hasn't been funded by WIFA, and it would be pretty cool visibility, and it sounds like a really great project. So hopefully, you guys will consider it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. I think because this is public comment, we will not be taking any action on these items. But thank you for the feedback, and that will be considered. So we will, let's see, I lost my agenda. I'm lost without this. I'm so good, someone princess and brings it. Our next meeting, so our next meeting will be Monday at 4:30. Director McGuire is going to give us directions.
Directions, instructions, both of those things, all of that. Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. As she said, the next meeting will be held on Monday afternoon at 4:30. That is a virtual-only meeting, so although if you come down here, I'm sure we'll have staff here. There won't be anybody else, so feel free to just join that, committee members, via Zoom, as usual. At that meeting is when we will actually vote on recommendations to the board based on all of the 60-plus applications that you all just very effectively heard. Thank you so much for your work on that. We are asking that each committee member come prepared with the filled-out decision tool that we've referenced many times. That decision tool will be provided to the public for reference in our public materials. Committee members, of course, you fill that out on an individual basis. You're not sharing that with other committee members. That is your notes only. We ask that you come with that completed because what we will do to begin the meeting is ask each of you to identify those applications, which you recommend for funding, that total $14.1 million. So that'll be the starting point of our discussion. We'll go through procedurally from there, but that is our big ask of you. So this weekend, as you have time getting that filled out so that it is ready to go on Monday at 4:30. I will also note to any of the applicants that may still be on the line with us, and this will be sent to you in an email as well. We are accepting additional questions or answers to questions for your application if you weren't able to give those answers on this Zoom via email until Monday morning. So keep a lookout on your emails for instructions on that. So committee members, I'll also just note that for you that if we do receive comments or questions from applicants or answers to questions from applicants, we will note to you which of those applicants sent those. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Could you comment quickly because some folks had to abstain from applications? Can you comment on how that will be managed?
Absolutely. So if you did have a conflict on an application and needed to abstain from that, of course, do not include it in your committee decision tool. And every application that we need to, we will take a roll-call vote. And so you will simply not participate in that roll-call vote. We will note that for the record, but you should not comment on an application that you needed to abstain from one way or another.
Thank you. Are there other questions from committee members for Chelsea on the process? With that, I think we will move to our favor. With that, I think we will move to our favorite part of the meeting, Agenda Item Number 8, adjournment. We are, what time are we at? We are at 3:02 PM, and we are now adjourned. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Guys, have a good one.
Thank you.